Recording in progress.
Okay, you can start.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Moraga Regular Meeting for Wednesday, August 24th, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4th, 2020. This meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Town Council members and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio or video. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar. If you are connected either by telephone or by Zoom, it means that you've been able to get to the homepage of the Moraga Town and you found the agenda and connected via that process. But the agenda includes instructions for connecting. It also includes instructions for how to provide input during the meeting during periods in which the public is welcome to provide input. You can do that such by Zoom by using the raised hand feature, which is at the bottom of the screen, or the agenda provides a... You can use the raised hand feature, excuse me, or you dial 9 by telephone if you want to provide audio input. I now call to order this meeting. Let's start with roll call. Councilmember Onoda?
Here.
Councilmember Macker?
Here.
McClure?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sauce?
I'm here.
And Mayor Wallicky is here. With tears in my eyes, if we could request Brianna Brant to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. John, are you going to show me the flag or should I put up the flag that I have?
I think we need to use yours. I'm on a different computer and I don't have my flag downloaded here. Apologies.
Okay, we've got a couple of flags here. When you're ready, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brianna, thank you very much. Okay, that now takes us on to special announcements. I see no special announcements. We now move on to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation tonight, a proclamation tonight, thank you, excuse me. And it concerns the International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 31st, 2022. We have a visitor. April was here a moment ago. Have you elevated April?
He's here.
Here.
He's on screen.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is let April chat, present, which would like to educate us. And then town council members can provide comments and ask questions and then open it up for a public comment and then we'll read the proclamation at that point. So, April?
Okay.
Thank you very much for joining us. I really appreciate your doing so.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and it is an educational opportunity. That's why we do these proclamations. This is the first time we've actually done this for International Overdose Awareness Day. But most of you surely know that our overdose rate in our country is going up and up every single year. It doesn't go down despite our best efforts. And so that's what I want to talk about so that not just you are informed, but we also, whoever else is attending the meeting or will watch it later, will also get a tidbit of information about this issue. So I am the founder and the representative for both the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse. That is a nonprofit organization based in San Ramon, where I live. And then the Contra Costa County Meds Coalition, I formed two years after the NCA PDA for short. And that was to really focus the county's attention on this issue. This was back in 2010, in the case of the NCA PDA, and in the case of the Meds Coalition, 2012. So I'm here to accept the proclamation and again educate just a bit. So this global event, and this is an International Overdose Awareness Day event, happens traditionally on the 31st of August. We are going to recognize it ourselves with an event I'll share with you in a little bit here on the 27th because it's a weekend and we feel like we can get more people to attend and be available to participate. But it is a global event meant to remember those that we've lost too soon to overdose and to support those that they left behind and to break down the stigma that keeps people from asking for substance use treatment support. I happen to be one of those, you know, moms out there. We've got so many more out there besides myself that are living with a lost child, you know, to overdose. And that was back in 2009 when our son passed away completely unexpectedly while he was away at college attending Arizona State University as last year's school, the day before he was supposed to come home for winter break. And he basically had been out with his friends. He had taken medications that had been prescribed to him, mixed them with some alcohol while they were out at the clubs, you know, celebrating again, ready to all go home for the winter break. And he went home after basically consuming a pill of Xanax, a pill and a half of Oxycodone, a little bit more probably than he should have taken, and then combining the alcohol. That is all it took to kill him. And that's what started me on this mission to educate people about prescription drug safety. And that's evolved over to also talk about fentanyl safety because you probably also know that we've got a raging fentanyl problem. A lot of fentanyl coming into our country illegally, being formed into fake-looking prescription. They're fake, but they look just like real prescription drug pills that are quite commonly abused. And so we've got a perception of harm for prescription drugs still out there despite our best efforts. That is not challenging people to not go seek out drugs on social media sites like TikTok and Snapchat, even fake pharmacies that are out there that are sending out fentanyl-laced product. So on a national level, we have this last year lost over 100,000 people to overdose and locally, basically in our county, 262 fatal overdoses. 144 of those were from opioids alone and probably a big percentage of those were from fentanyl. So it's in our backyard, it's here, it's in every community. And in fact, there's a system on data program that I just caught access to about a week ago. And I literally went in today to look and see what non-fatal overdoses there may have been in your community. And there were three of them in the same zip code, in fact, since January this year because we're only seeing non-fatal overdoses there. I know there are others out there, even in our county. And of course, these numbers don't tell the whole story. And we're looking at the overdoses, but we're also looking at non-fatal overdoses. We're looking at ED visits. We're looking at hospitalizations and also the traumatized families that are dealing with substance use disorder in their families every single day. I've seen the impact. We didn't go through that personally, but I've seen the impact on our community members and it's really, really sad. So you also may not really know that the leading cause of death right now between those that are 18 to 45 years old in the U.S. is fentanyl overdose. That's just crazy. We're losing a whole generation of young people that we need to carry on, right? And so that is, you know, comes into our country like in the form of fake pills I mentioned, but there is no drug out there on the black market per se, street drugs, that is not now being tainted with fentanyl. So it is really extremely important for us to understand the dynamics around this and to educate our family members, anybody we care about. No drug is safe right now from this. We're even now starting to see fentanyl come into our country looking like candy, looking like Tylenol and actually being packaged as though it's Tylenol. It's getting scarier and scarier. Those we've lost to overdose mattered. My son mattered and I will never forget how I think about him every single day. We need to remember them, but also support and embrace our family members and our friends or community members around us that are really suffering and will for the rest of their lives. We invite you to join that event that I talked about. It's going to be in Antioch at Chi Chi Boo Park on Saturday, this Saturday, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. And so we're going to have information, educational and support tables, services provided there. I will be performing overdose rescue training and passing out Narcan kits to those who want them. We get them from the state, so it's easy to package them and give them out to our community members. Anybody at any given time can literally run into an overdose. It may be a bathroom where you go into, in a restaurant, or just pretty much anywhere now. So I urge everybody to think about getting an overdose rescue kit. Our coalition provides them. So I'd love to see you contact me and ask for that training. And you can do that by just reaching out at, you know, ncapda.org is the best one to do that. And then I just want to just, again, thank you so much for recognizing this event, letting me be here tonight with you to give you just a little teeny piece of, you know, educational information that I hope will make a difference and maybe spur you on to ask for more support and information that can make you, you know, that additional person that can be out there spreading the word, which is super important. So...
April, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments or questions, questions, comments by members of the town council? Yes, Teresa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. April, first of all, my heart goes out to you and I applaud you for what you've done, you know, in response to such a horrible situation. You've really, you know, that old saying, make lemonade out of lemons. You have definitely done that. You've made, you know, that's huge. And I was thinking, you know, the thing that our town has that you might want to have a booth at is the Pear Festival because I think, you know, that would be a way to teach the people of Moraga and it's well-attended, you know, so far as our little town is concerned. So that might be something you might want to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. What date is it? And I just need the logistics.
It's the last weekend of September.
September 24th.
September 24th.
9/24 and location?
At the Moraga Commons.
Okay.
If you... I will, I will, I visited your website, so I will try to send to you the link if, to get a booth if you wish to do so.
Yeah, we'd love to. Absolutely, that sounds great. And we could provide onsite again, you know, overdose rescue training and the kits.
That would be fabulous.
Free and lots of great information to pass out. Thank you.
Other council members? Renata?
Yeah, April, thank you for coming. Thank you for the work you're doing, that you have taken what must be an unimaginable and horrible loss and channeled that into advocacy and efforts on behalf of others who hopefully will not have to go through what you've been through. It is wonderful. And I think, you know, whatever we can do to help promote awareness, I think is important because we need to talk about this. People need to know it is a problem, not just, you know, in other communities, but in our community. And the fact that it's not getting better is disappointing, so let's reverse it. Let's reverse that trend. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. I'd love to have a single point of contact to have further discussion with whoever about that. So thank you so much.
Sona?
Thank you. Yes, just echoing, you know, how amazing it is to hear the impact you've been able to make following the experiences you faced. And in particular, just thinking about the need for everyone to have basic education so that you can be that bystander that actually doesn't become a bystander, but knows how to intervene. We think about CPR and other skills. We need to broaden that education to include what you're talking about. And the fact that it is happening at the rates that you talk about, it's alarming and I think raises the alarm bell enough that we should all be advocating for this type of awareness. So thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us, really.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and I'm very impressed how you took your personal loss and turned it into being an advocate towards a solution here. Actually, I was not aware of the rescue kits and training, so I learned something tonight. And I would encourage you, the Pear Festival is, you know, one of the Moraga events, pears are what we are known for. So I would encourage that. There will be a lot of people there. And I just want to say thank you for what you do and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you know, April, go ahead, Teresa.
Oh, thank you. You know, I thought of something else. April, do you speak to the high schools?
I do. There used to be under Jamie Rich's, I think most of you probably know Jamie. We worked together for quite a few years to get out to various schools within the La Mirinda environment. I've been over to Moraga in middle school, for instance, as an example. But after her coalition faded, then we didn't seem to have the connections we needed anymore to really get out there. We would love to reestablish those though because our coalitions continued even though hers, you know, did fold and, you know, due to funding and all that from the county. So, yeah, I go into middle schools, high schools, mostly high schools, but middle schools need this information too. So I'd be happy to do any of that. And for the Meds Coalition, we have a new coordinator that's just come in, so we have double resources per se. So, you know, we should be able to help out there. We also have, anyway, there's a whole lot of other things behind those things. I know you don't have time to hear about, but parent guides coming up, guides that we hope to get out to our teachers so they can be self-sufficient in getting the information out to their students and their parent communities too.
April, you know, using that phrase, every life saved is a miracle and certainly that applies to your work. Very impressed and thank you so much. The, I visited your website. I'm very impressed with the breadth that is covered, the depth. You have, with regard to, for example, Narcon and other tools and also the partners you have in this effort. So I'll get you that provided, you know, there's a contact at the website.
Great.
But I'm sure I can hear it from Marty, otherwise your email address. We'll get you the link for the Pear Festival and see if I can't get a single point of contact for you also.
Okay, info@...
Thank you very much. So we're going to open up the meeting for public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak from the public? Barbara Preston's at the top of the list. Barbara, is this a subject you'd like to provide input on?
Are you calling for comment about the, what was just presented or full other public comment?
All right, we're not to other public comment yet, Barbara. This is specifically to...
My comment is for later. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendall, if you want to talk about the drug program, overdose, International Overdose Day? Can we elevate Kendall, please? You're on, Kendall.
Hi, April, thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate this. It's sort of, I sort of feel like it's, your open stage is a very small step in a big project. So it's just the beginning. And I, I just want to digress just a moment because my wife passed away in 2011 after a long battle of cancer. She had fentanyl patches, which I was supposed to use rubber gloves to put on, which I did. And she had a tremendous amount of narcotics. And of course, I had to destroy them after she passed away. And I found it very difficult to find a place to destroy this product. I ended up having to take it to not the Moraga Police Department, but another police department to take care of it. And I found that very troubling. And my question, April, and this is, my point on what I just explained to you is the question. You know, I don't quite understand, and I'm hoping you can help me on this. How so much of this narcotic is getting out? Is it from the medicine cabinets? Is it being made in the back room somewhere? I'm really kind of at a loss. And I consider myself fairly intelligent, but I don't understand how this explosion of narcotic has occurred. It can't just be from leftovers like from what I had for my wife. It can't be. It's just mind-boggling to me, so much is out there. Can you help me under...
Yeah, I mean, there are multiple different, you know, contributors to, I think, the problem. Even though we've worked on it for several years, I've worked with the Alameda Contra Costa Medical Association. For instance, we had a specific project to reduce opioid, you know, prescribing levels for instance. So instead of just blindly kind of, anybody gets opioids who asks for them or, you know, after any procedure, you're going to get opioids, you know, that's starting to ratchet back. I don't think it's where it needs to be quite yet, though. And then the other thing is people don't know where to dispose of the medications that they have left over afterwards. That's often, they just take one or two pills or maybe not even any of them. They get the prescription filled, but then it stays there in the medicine cabinet. Just so everybody knows where you can dispose of them, any CVS in our county takes them back. And then the police departments normally do. It sounds like you had some issue and I'm not sure why that was, but the police departments have their bins also. The Safeways also in our county all have their disposal bins too. So those are three distinct places you can take them. If you have any Kaiser facilities, I don't think you do in Moraga, but there are some over in Walnut Creek. They normally have a bin in their front, you know, they're providing a bin also. And of course, there's...
The Moraga Police Department accepts prescription medications or any medications and we collect over a thousand pounds every year. So people are free to drop it off.
Yeah, another...
Also trained in the use of Narcon, all of our, Narcan, all of our...
Thank you. We need to move on. April, thank you so much again.
Yeah, you're good.
Let's move to the proclamation. If we could rotate the proclamation as we normally do. Sona, if you would start it off and then we'll move to Teresa, then Mike, Renata, and then myself. So if you're ready, Sona, could you start this?
A proclamation declaring August 31st, 2022 as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas the first international overdose awareness day was commemorated 20 years ago and since its inception in 2001, the day has been noted by governments and official organizations. And...
Whereas the Town of Moraga does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by drug overdose. And...
Whereas the town recognizes that the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day is to remember loved ones' loss to overdose and to end the stigma surrounding substance use disorder and drug-related deaths. And...
Whereas the town resolves to play its part in reducing the toll of overdose in the community, which continues to claim the lives of Moraga community members every year and forever affects those who loved and cared about them. And...
Whereas the town acknowledges that the people affected by overdose are sons and daughters, mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, and deserving of love, compassion, and support and remembrance. And...
Whereas the Contra Costa County Meds Coalition, B A A R T programs, and other community partners declare August 31st, 2022 as International Overdose Awareness Day.
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Wallicky, Mayor of the Town of Moraga, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2022, overdose awareness day in the Town of Moraga and urge all citizens to stand in solidarity to reduce further overdose deaths. Again, thank you all. I'm going to keep the public meeting open at this point and move on to public comments and suggestions. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on items which are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council cannot discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referenced to staff or placed on a future agenda. I note that public input will also be taken during each agenda item and public comments may be made on consent agenda items. So are there any public input? And I see Barbara Preston has her hand raised. If you could raise, elevate Barbara, please. Barbara, I think you're on.
Barbara Preston, 1307 Larch Avenue. On behalf of the Moraga Garden Club and myself, I would like to profusely thank Brianna Brant for her amazing years of service to the Town of Moraga and its citizens. While many in the community may be unaware how directly she enriches their lives, her impact has been enormous. With the ludicrously large staff of seven, Brianna oversees a myriad of activities from Hacienda Night, the Pear and Fourth of July Festivals, the Moraga Monarch Welcome Party, Concert Night, Summer Camps, Moraga Idol, Summer Movies Under the Stars, an activity calendar that has choices from baking for kindergarteners to yoga for seniors and maintenance of Moraga's four parks, medians, and library grounds. She is the epitome of the perfect public servant. Kind, hardworking, a consensus builder and good listener, and a creative problem solver. Without her, the Monarch Garden at Rancho La Cuna would never have been built. It will be a tough transition to Napa with its dearth of fine dining and lack of beautiful vistas. But when you tire of trying to remember the names of your 46 staff, we hope you will take a drive south for a visit, enjoy, and enjoy the new garden at the Moraga Commons that you helped bring to fruition and to have a fish taco at Cafe Tinga, a porcetta at La Finestra, and a colch at the Canyon Club. Lest you forget us. And could you turn on my video just for a moment?
One moment.
Okay, I'm holding. May, you have to start it for me. Okay, this is not going to work. I don't, okay.
My prompt is ask to start video.
Okay. And now I can. No, I can't. Okay, well, what, what, what's your...
Barbara, are you going to be able to attend on Friday? Maybe we can handle it better.
Yeah. This picture that I'm trying to hold up in video is going to magically appear on Brianna's desk tomorrow. Was the first selfie taken at the Foundry with the wing sculpture featuring Brianna. Thank you, Brianna.
Barbara, thank you very much.
We remember you fondly and gratefully. With love.
Great.
Thank you, Bobby. I have no words. That was absolutely beautiful.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Cynthia, are you going to make an announcement about Friday at some point tonight?
Yeah, well, we can do that now. So this Friday at 2 o'clock, at 2 o'clock, right? Brianna, at the Hacienda, we'll be having a farewell party for Brianna, thanking her for her almost five, four and a half years of service and sending her off for her new adventure as the Parks and Rec Director for the city of Napa. Napa's Parks and Rec Department has a larger budget than the entire Town of Moraga, so she will have her hands full. And I know she's ready for the next challenge, but she's been a huge help too. uh, the town, she's made an invaluable contribution, and she's been a great partner, so. We will say more wonderful things about her Friday, and you're all invited.
Thank you very much. We have Hannah Mattiotta? Mattiotta, if you could elevate Hannah, please?
Yes.
Hannah, you're, I, you can sneak in.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Yes, uh, Hannah Mattiotta with the Maraga Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to give a quick update on our activities. Uh, we decided to pull off of the Community Fair this year and concentrate on internal organization, working on our systems upgrades and regarding our board. Um, and we're gonna move forward with an art walk activity in October. Um, then we have a lot of buy-in from businesses and landlords, um, and that'll be held in the Ring Shopping Center. Um, that's, that's pretty much it for my recap, so thank you.
Hannah, thank you very, very much. We have a, a hand from Mr. Mike McClure, who I understand is stepping away from the town council position and talking as a private citizen. If you have uh, up, up to three, three minutes.
I'd like to do a spin in my chair and come back here. This is resident Mike McClure, speaking as a Rotarian for an update on the Community Service Day project representing the nine community members steering committee. As you may recall, the goal of Community Service Days is to engage a larger part of our community to assist those in need, help our schools, and beautify the town through community volunteers on specific days and projects. October first and second, Saturday and Sunday, will be the days for this event. One of the key goals is to attract new people and families to volunteer by focusing the event on specific projects during these two days. The project is sponsored and organized by nine Maraga community groups, specifically Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, the Garden Club, the Maraga Chamber of Commerce, the Maraga School District, the Campolindo High School, Saint Mary's College, and Bobby Preston. A few of the key projects include food for homeless, low-income families, isolated seniors, and foster children. Painting small planting pots with messages of kindness and personal expression, which are then distributed and donated to local senior organizations. Helping the Maraga School District with beautification of their campuses by gardening and cleaning. Fire abatement and trail cleaning to safeguard our community and sustainable gardening projects at Campolindo High School and Saint Mary's College, and we actually do have more. Well, I hope you're excited, we're excited. We will have a website in mid-September for people to go in and sign up and pick your event, and we're gonna have a lot of fun. I look forward to seeing all of you, thank you very much.
Thank you, citizen Mike McClure. We have one more hand, Kendall Langen, if you could elevate Kendall, please, and Kendall, you have a maximum of three minutes.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I am a candidate for the two-year seat that is opening up on uh, November eighth for a vote. I've lived in Maraga since nineteen fifty-three, I'm speaking tonight on two issues, public safety and ethics. Uh, the town that I'm in tonight has hundreds, if not thousands, of golf carts and low-speed vehicles, all of which are registered legal vehicles, and any who are not are cited upon sight. This is because the town refuses, this town I'm in, to be liable for any uh, lack of enforcement of California State vehicle codes. And if an accident occurs in this town, it is not liable because they have an active enforcement code by their officers. This is not so in Maraga, and any driver of any unregistered golf cart or low-speed vehicle carries no insurance. And if, I'm stipulating today and now that it puts the town in liability and jeopardy for accident insurance liability because they are not enforcing this. Now, I understand that there's a few golf court and low-speed vehicle enforcements, but there is no active campaign. And if you saw the number of vehicles here, and I've talked with people in Maraga who say, oh, they're doing this because they're trying to save energy. They're putting me at liable risk. My, I pay taxes in this town, and they're putting me at risk, and I don't like it. Subject number two, ethics. I've been told that Suzanne Jones is the unofficial sixth council council member and is considered an assistant or advisor to the town manager. Can you explain this to me? How can a non-resident, which I understand this person is not a resident of Maraga, but lives in Bolington Canyon, has tremendous influence on the town council and the town staff? In fact, it's been told, I've been told that she has been hand-selecting candidates for town council as far back as twenty years. How can this be? Can the town council please explain this? And Barbara Preston, I understand you're very important in this community, but you know, I've lived here my whole life, and I don't know Barbara. And so I guess I need to know more people, and I guess no, more people need to know, know me, because I'm one of the oldest citizens in Maraga. Thank you very much.
Kendall, thank you. I see no additional uh, hands raised. Let's uh, let's move on, I close the public meeting. Now, the next item, number six, adoption of the consent agenda. Are there any consent agenda items that council members wish to uh, poll? No one? I would like to poll item six point nine, the Hacienda ADA pathway improvements, and also um, item six point one two, police vehicle purchase. If it's okay with everybody else, I would like to propose approval of all consent agenda items excluding six point, all uh, proposed, move to approve all consent agenda items as proposed, excluding item six point nine and six point one two. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Uh, Teresa, seconded it? Um, do roll call vote, uh, Sona?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Renata?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Uh, these should be very quick, especially the first one. Uh, six point nine, the Hacienda ADA pathway improvements, I just wanted to really compliment staff. Uh, you know, we've been living with that patio for years and years and years, and with the improvements, both from an ADA standpoint and from the enlarged patio, it, the, especially the enlarged patio, just really changes the whole atmosphere of event, of events. It used to be we would be packed sort of in the patio, and then out on the grass, if the grass is dry enough, and, and uh, now it's, it's become far more functional, so I just wanted to, to note that and, and uh, with that, unless anyone else has something to say, I would like to move for approval of that six point nine.
Second.
Oh, timeout, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mayor Wallakey, I would suggest that you um, you've made your comments on six point nine, maybe you could uh, discuss six point one two, and then you can have a public comment on both items, and then one motion to approve those two items.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Denise will, will proceed that accordingly. Six point one two, uh, police vehicle purchase. Chief King, um, I'm all in favor of this. The, the question I have, and I'd like to have it addressed publicly, is uh, moving at some point to electric or uh, plug-in electric uh, vehicles. You know, it's, it's, we're gonna at some point transition to that. I know that some um, departments have at least tested such. Wondering before we, we pass approval on this particular purchase, are we ready for that? Do you see that coming in the future? Do you have any uh, input that we, will, will help us?
Sure, no, I, it's definitely something that we've looked at. Uh, Ford currently has a hybrid version of the Explorer Pursuit utility vehicle. Uh, the price tag on that is about eight thousand dollars more than what we're paying for this vehicle. Um, that's a lot to claw back. Um, the, the footside of that too is Ford also has a fully-electric F-one-fifty pickup that they're getting ready to roll out into a Pursuit uh, configuration. But when we say Pursuit, that means that the, the vehicle is uh, is rated to, to be driven in a Pursuit there. Uh, they beef up the brakes, the suspension's beefed up, it's uh, it makes the vehicle, their safety uh, uh, equipment is added to the vehicle, that, that's, that's why. Uh, our problem is, is that um, right now, uh, you know, we, I, we're gonna hear in a couple of weeks of, about the, the town's uh, uh, energy uh, program. But right now, we don't have the ability in, for example, uh, public safety power shutdown to charge those vehicles. Um, and so that, we, we've got some infrastructure work to do first before we can go to a, a plug-in hybrid or a uh, or, or a um, a fully-electric vehicle. Certainly, uh, very interested in doing that. Uh, Fremont Police has been testing a Tesla S for quite a while. Uh, they've had pretty good luck with it, except when they forgot to plug it in. And uh, it didn't do so well. Um, the, my other uh, uh, my other concern about them at times is I've, I'm reading more and more articles about uh, the fire hazards of those vehicles, if they catch fire, and the amount of time it takes, and the amount of water and material it takes to get that fire out. So um, so, and, and in this case, uh, we're able to obtain this vehicle now. Uh, and if I were, if I were to come back and advocate, you know, hey, I want you to spend an extra eight thousand dollars, uh, we're now looking at probably May twenty twenty-three to get that, to get one of those vehicles. So for, for us at this point in time, uh, this is probably our best deal. It also standardizes our fleet, so all, all of the patrol vehicles are set up exactly the same. So no matter what vehicle an officer gets into, uh, the equipment's the same, the controls are the same. Uh, you know, we're not bouncing around in different models and, you know, okay, how do I turn the lights on here? Kind of thing, so, uh, those are, those are some of the reasons. The town manager and I have actually had this discussion about uh, uh, you know, can we go hybrid, or, or even can we go all-electric? And I just don't, I, I see us doing it in the future, I just um, uh, we'll, we'll get there. Um, uh, and I think it's coming.
Thank you very much, continuing uh, story, so to speak, and um, consistent with uh, our goal to improve our sustainability. Uh, with that, are there other comments? If not, I would like to move for approval of items six point nine and six point one two of the consent agenda as proposed.
May, Mayor, um,
Oh, excuse me, yes.
She put her hand down.
And I open for uh, public comments, please. Are there any public comments uh, on these two items? I see no hands? So I'm gonna try one more time. Move for approval of items six point nine and six point one two as proposed of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Teresa, uh, seconded, a roll call vote, uh, Sona?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Renata?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm a yes too. Thank you. That moves us on to the uh, adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any proposed changes to it? If not, uh, would someone like to propose its approval?
Move approval. Second. I'll give it to Mike, I'll be the second.
It's okay.
Teresa could be the mover, and Renata is the second. Sona?
Yes.
Teresa? Mike?
Yes.
Renata?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That moves us on to reports. Cynthia, do you have a town manager report for us, please?
I do, I do, I have a few things to share, let's see. The town's after-school enrichment program for the school year begins on September sixth. We have Move United Commons Park on September ninth, and that's in Kanto. And again, the Perrin Wine Festival is September fourth, and we're now accepting booth applications. Also, um, the nomination, election nominations have closed. There's a candidate binder available in the town offices for anyone who's interested. We had two candidates for the two-year seat, that's Kendall Langen and David Shapiro. And we have two candidates for the two four-year seats. Uh, our current mayor, Steve Wallakey, and our current Planning Commission Chair, Carrie Hillis. Um, and the election date is November eighth, and all, all seats will be on the upcoming uh, election ballot. Um, let's see, we received seven proposals for construction management of the twenty-twenty-two pavement rehabilitation program, and we're interviewing the top three, and we plan to bring that uh, to the council at our next meeting. Um, we have many, many meetings. Most of the meetings in the rest of this year, we're gonna be talking about something related to housing. Um, and let's see, the last thing is uh, our second tranche of ARPA funds have been received, so we have received our full disbursement. We still have a very small amount of money left for our small business recovery grants. Um, and I'll let our mayor share with you uh, about our uh, recent delivery of checks and um, I already shared about Brianna, so I hope you can all make it on Friday, and that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, could you give us an update on, do you have a, or do you have an updated report, please?
Okay, sure, um, as a point of information, I wanted to disclose that at the end of July, I had a significant fall visiting my daughter in Denver um, in ER and trauma unit for a few days. I'm, I'll spare you the details, I'm halfway through recovery, getting better. Uh, but if I appear a bit off, maybe that's the reason. Um, I would like to congratulate a new retail business in Maraga since our last meeting. Lou's Chicken Shop, uh, Richard's the owner, I've had a couple very nice conversations with him. He is the brother of Louis from Noodle Theory, and he moved into the old Noodle Theory spot um, off of uh, Ring Boulevard. So if you get a chance, um, let's welcome a new business. Uh, also, since our last meeting, the Maraga Chamber of Commerce has announced Bay Area Ball Players as the Business of the Year, and Joy in Motion as the nonprofit Business of the Year. So I'd like to extend congratulations uh, to both of them. You heard briefly from uh, one of our um, chamber board members, the Community Fair, and I can just add that it, it's still important, it's just the chamber continues to find challenges with uh, past items that really need to be cleaned up in a dress and being fully operational and a part-time person. So I hope we're all supportive, um, it's gonna come, but let's let them choose the time. And finally, I'd like to share my best wishes to uh, Brianna. I had talked to her on the phone, but I didn't realize she'd been here for four and a half years, but uh, Brianna's done to me so much for the town, and I've always admired her creativity. She always has something a little different, a little new. Um, I actually, uh, last year got to be at the Christmas lighting, and she made it an event, not just turn the lights on. And there's, you know, hot chocolate and music, and so it's really been good, the Bible, to defer some of the costs, and she has program after program. And you may not be aware that when she came in, when we were at Maraga, was still in the process of restarting and um, elevating its park and rec program from uh, previous years. And if you look at our new park and rec programs, including this year, you'll see we've accomplished a tremendous amount. So we'll miss you, Brianna, but I must say, going to Napa, I'm envious, I have to figure some way to have a a meeting, a session, or an event up there, there she is. So she's been great, and she's been the contact um, on, on many projects here, so I'll be there on Friday and see you, and I wanna just say thank you for what you've given the town, um, and be Um and because you've given us so much, and best wishes, best wishes as you move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, uh Teresa, can you give us an update?
Sure, thank you, Mr.
From your summer vacation?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, is that what it was? Um so it appeared that not all of the committees knew that we were on vacation. Because I still had MCE meetings, which were, you know, I truly enjoy hearing, and it appears. Um that Richmond is just going to be on the verge of all kinds of incredible innovative things. Hydrogen from garbage, you know, and that's something that um solid waste will have to look at and and see how they're doing that. Um so I've attended MCE meetings, and for those of you who aren't sure what MCE is, it's Marin Clean Energy. And we are part of that. Um also Solid Waste Committee, um and lots of art and public spaces. And the if you go into West Commons now, you will have a wonderful surprise. Because the Fisherman is there, and we hope to have many other sculptures there. You know, probably at the beginning of winter, once we okay them through this important committee here, the town council. Um and and the guys, the public works people, were fabulous putting that together. Um and I think we have, Brianna can probably tell us, I think we might have a video of that on the website. Um do we, Brianna?
Uh we put the video out, the time-lapse video of the install was on our Instagram stories. But I will see if I could also get it up on the website, but yeah, lots of lots of positive comments and feedback, especially on the social media outlets.
Yeah, yeah, and when we were putting it, while I was standing there watching, you know, I didn't lift a finger, of course. Um but there were people who were walking through the park, and oh my gosh, were they delighted? I mean, I think we really hit a home run on this one, it's so exciting, and it's just so unexpected in Moraga. I put it on Facebook, and people were just applauding right and left, so that's really exciting. Um and I guess, you you know, I don't know if I should save my comments for Brianna, you know, till Friday. I think I will, um but I, you know, just all my love to you, Brianna. End of report.
Thank you, Sona?
Thank you. Uh no reports coming out of committee meetings for me during the break, but one thing I I definitely wanted to point out and and plug. Was is the About Town Newsletter. While being out and about during the summer break, you know, meeting more people, moving into my neighborhood and development. Um it it's it's interesting when they introduce yourself, that you're involved with the town, people ask, how do I stay plugged in? Without having to follow a zillion different social media channels. And um I always talk about how great the About Town Newsletter is and how much work staff puts into it to ensure that it's accurate. Um also promotes all the great work that other volunteers in the town are doing. So I just am always excited to tell people about it and get them to subscribe to it. And um speaking of all of the, you know, great events that were happening, you know, week after week over the summer. I really wanna, you know, thank Brianna for all of that and everything. I mean, you look around the town, ev- you've had an impact on every corner. La Cienya, the Commons, the Trails, and even partnerships with businesses like Canyon. You really had inspire people to get involved from all different walks of life. Whether it's in skills that they're good at, like art, or new things that they wanna explore. You really inspire and motivate people because of your energy and all the creative approaches you bring to getting people involved. So we're gonna miss you a lot and definitely um plan to keep keep track of all the great things you're doing in Napa.
Thank you, Sona. Renata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um Mike, sorry about what happened, wish you were speedy. And and I would say pain-free recovery, but I don't think that's probably possible, so uh be well. Um Brianna, um I'm gonna save my uh praises, thanks, and accolades till till Friday. Uh because for my report, I wanna focus on my favorite topic, which is garbage collections. Um ma- many of you, once again, are experiencing delays in service, and so I wanna address that. So Republic Services, which collects the cans, continues to assert that COVID-related absences and driver shortages. Are the reason for the latest round of delays. And just to step back, as I've I've explained before, but I think it's worth folks knowing, the town of Moraga does not contract directly. With Republic for collection services, rather, the contract is between. Uh Republic on the one hand, and Recycle Smart on the other, and Recycle Smart is basically. A consortium of cities in Contra Costa County and the county itself. That pool their collective buying power to procure waste recycling and composting services. So Recycle Smart staff is working with Republic to get them to right the ship, and please know. That the ongoing service issues will play a role in the upcoming fee negotiation. Um in the meantime, for self-help, my suggestion is if you're having an issue, go to the Republic Services website. Click on Customer Support, on that page, you'll see a phone number for customer service if you wanna talk to a live per- person. Or click on Service Alerts, and you can enter your address and see what the s- what the status is of your collection. Or go to the bottom of the page under Account Services, where you click Report a Delivery Problem or a Miss Pickup. And then that will get reported, and then, yeah, you know, feeling that, you can always shoot me an email, and I'll make sure it gets to the right people. End of my report.
Renata, thank you very much, we're gonna call you the garbage lady now. For myself, several things uh since this uh summer period, uh very quickly. Uh I think all council members received a notification from the California Alliance of Local Electrons. Uh related to um the six-cycle arena and the update to the housing elements. Uh I attended part of a Zoom meeting on July twenty-fourth, and. Uh Denise Bizzano attended, I think, the the whole meeting, I could not attend the whole meeting. Um if you have questions related to that, uh please see Denise or myself. Um I'm happy to report, I I announced previously that MOFD. Had authorized as part of this year's budget, a half-million-dollar grant program. To assist the residents of both Arinda and Moraga in hardening their homes, with the focus being on vents. And and the 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 danger here is a ember fire, and um ember's getting in through the vents of the homes. Uh and maybe lying, so to speak, dormant for some period of time, and then suddenly, two or three days after the wild fire. Uh individual homes can catch fire, so to speak, and and be destroyed. So um there will be the opportunity to get rebates on a fairly expensive. Um mechanical type of vents that close automatically when it gets hot. Uh and alternatively, uh MOFD has purchased a and continuing to purchase a supply of what's called. Bushfire mesh from Australia, and it is a fine mesh that you can put fit into your your vents. And provide protection against ember ember fires. Um I've got confirmation that this is going to be advertised or communicated out via the About Town Newsletter. And I'm gonna see additional ways to make sure that it gets out to the residents of the town, because this is potentially a very um. A step change for for fire protection for the homes, moving them closer to being fire-protected. Uh there is a a page on the MOFD uh website where you can uh apply for. Uh either a rebate or uh request a supply of the bushfire mesh. I received, um I think yesterday, um that uh the county is creating a time cast capsule. Uh they, in September, will be opening a time capsule that was uh sealed in nineteen sixty-four. And uh Candice Anderson is requesting that towns uh provide uh letters and um photographs. To be included in the new um time capsule, and we have, I think it's September seventh, we're providing such. Uh means the four of us are gonna have to get together and take a photograph of us. Uh at at an appropriate site, and maybe even this Friday at the Hacienda, maybe we can, if we're all there, we can, we can do it then. Um and prepare a letter for for joint approval, and then we'll we'll submit that for the time capsule. And then finally, I had the pleasure yesterday uh with uh uh town manager Battenberg to present five additional. Uh small business pandemic recovery checks, uh and each of the entities that we were able to meet with. Were very, very appreciative for the contribution. So that ends my report. And that then moves us on to um public hearings, which we have none. And uh ordinances then moves us on to item ten, which is ordinances, resolutions, and requests for action. And ten A is inclusionary housing. Um I have a just a little bit of preamble for this. Um this, of course, is related to the housing element and addressing the issue of inclusionary housing. Um in the report, you you may have found a an awful lot of material. And uh the staff is looking for direction from us, so it's it's not, we're not looking for um a motion tonight on this. But they are looking for input, uh and the input on a number of different uh factors related to inclusionary housing and and. You know, for anyone on the audience, um who's not not familiar with this, inclusionary housing is basically when you're. I'm gonna let staff define that, because I'm I'm gonna let them uh give a presentation in a minute. But anyway, um so what we're gonna do is uh staff will make a presentation. We will have the opportunity for council members to ask questions. And then uh of staff and and resolve those questions, then we'll have public input, and then we will provide our input to staff. And for providing that input, I've requested staff to provide some kind of uh either table or matrix, so that. They can sort of lead us through each of the category areas, and we can provide input on those those areas, and and they'll provide. Uh perhaps some recommendations on each of the areas that we might consider. Any questions on that, and if not, I'm gonna turn it over to staff to start, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Walke, uh and council members and members of the audience tonight. Um so tonight, we're discussing inclusionary housing, uh it's a locally mandated requirement to respond to below-market rate units. Uh which are can be used as a tool uh to address the Reno requirements. Uh we had a discussion back in October, and it was a workshop, and it was part of affordable housing. Then we came back in May, and in May, we had like a more of a framework uh about inclusionary housing and some other elements as well. Um but overall, the consensus from council at that time was to come back with some more details. Um so we are back tonight with a lot of details. Um and what we are seeking is policy direction, just overall policy direction. Um and this report comes with a lot of research and discussion uh before it came to you. Uh so we talked to, uh we reviewed it with uh Contra Costa County cities and what they're doing and how it's being implemented. We talked directly with city staff, we've discussed with developers. Um and we've also, you know, have our consultants who are experts on this. Um so once we have, once we go through the report tonight, we will seek direction from council on each of the items. As requested by the mayor in a matrix form. And then we, our hope is to come back later in the fall, in November, December. Uh and to come with a more uh refined ordinance at that time. Uh so with that, I'm gonna introduce uh Barry Miller with Barry Miller Consultants, uh Stephanie Hagar with BAE. Uh Denise Bizzano was also part of the team, Sylvia Battenberg, of course, and myself, so thank you so much, Barry.
Great, good evening, and it's nice to see everybody again, uh it's Barry Miller with Barry Miller Consulting. And uh we're going to walk through this presentation. I'll also introduce my colleague Stephanie Hagar, I'm gonna turn this over to her in just a moment. Uh and we're gonna do a little bit of tag-teaming as we go through these policy choices. Uh as Director Hamid just mentioned, the uh the housing element includes a policy recommendation. To adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance, and this is part of the bigger comprehensive advanced planning initiative. That the town is currently undertaking, that includes rezoning, general plan amendments, an EIR, and so on. Uh this evening, we're really, as as has been mentioned, looking for direction. We have included some staff recommendations on each of the policy areas for your consideration. Uh you're welcome to suggest modifications to those recommendations, and certainly, we welcome your questions. Uh the point of this is really to put us in a position to draft an ordinance, which we will be bringing back to you for uh for adoption. And that would then become part of the municipal code. And I did want to say, um before turning it over to Stephanie, um this is something that we feel is an important step. Because we have a regional housing needs allocation of eleven hundred and eighteen units. What this means is we need to plan for that quantity of housing and demonstrate to the state that we can meet that target. Um we have met with you a number of times about the zoning changes to properties that are necessary to do that. Um but simply rezoning a piece of property does not get you affordable housing, it gets you the opportunity to build more housing. And denser housing, but we still are um needing tools, because five hundred and one units of that eleven hundred and eighteen total. Are uh intended to be affordable to lower-income households, and that's not gonna just happen magically by rezoning the property. Uh we really need to look for some incentives and some regulatory tools that will help us get there, and this is one of them. So with that, um Stephanie, if you wanna begin going through the next couple of slides, thank you.
You need to unmute first, um thank you, Barry, uh thanks for having me, it's nice to see you all again. Um so an inclusionary housing ordinance is a locally adopted ordinance, meaning that it's not required under state law. Um that requires that a certain percentage of new units in future pro- future residential developments will be rented or sold at below-market rates. We often refer to these as BMR units. Um because a portion of the units of these new developments would be sold or rented at below-market rates, there is an associated loss in profit to the developer. Um due to an inclusionary ordinance, which is often mitigated by um providing a density bonus and or other waivers of of development standards. To help offset the impacts of that loss in profit to the developer. Um the i- an inclusionary housing ordinance is seen as an effective tool for affirmatively furthering fair housing. Because it um incorporates affordable units along with market rate units in new development. Um so you're getting dispersal of affordable units within projects that are newly built. Um and as Barry mentioned, this is also a good way to um help to achieve a portion of the town's lower-income arena. Um it it probably won't get you all the way to achieving your lower-income arena, but by building some affordable units into market-rate developments, it'll get you part of the way there.
Hey, it's, it's, I'm sorry, um am I the only one that's having a a sound issue here? Uh you're all okay, everyone else is okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, thanks, Barry, um so this slide shows um the other jurisdiction, all the jurisdictions within Contra Costa County. Um and demonstrates that ninety percent of jurisdictions in the county either currently have an inclusionary ordinance. Or are evaluating adopting an inclusionary ordinance as part of their housing element update. Um of these, most already have an inclusionary housing ordinance, um but some, including Moraga, are on this list as uh jurisdictions that are considering this as part of their housing element. Uh there are only two jurisdictions in the county, Martinez and Oakley, that um that don't have an ordinance and are not currently considering adopting one. Um so this is something that's fairly common among other jurisdictions in the county. Um so it's sort of alluded to this a couple of slides ago, but um inclusionary housing does um affect the economics of new development. Um specifically, it affects the value of new projects that are built. So by reducing the sale price or the rents from a certain. So by reducing the sale price or the rents from a certain portion of units in a new development, that affects the overall value of a new project that has multiple units. And that can mean that if an inclusionary requirement is too high, projects will cease to become feasible and new development will not go forward. So that would mean that if you have inclusionary requirements that exceed that, that level, you could find that no residential developments move forward or a smaller portion would move forward than would happen under other conditions. In many cases, there are incentives that jurisdictions layer on with their inclusionary ordinances to help offset those impacts. So those could be incentives that help to reduce development costs. So that could be, say, a reduction in parking requirements that help to reduce the cost of building. They can also be incentives that affect project values. So when we talk about a density bonus, that's often to the sort of thinking behind that is that you're adding additional units to that site, which help to improve the value of the project that can be built on the site to help offset the fact that some of those units are affordable. And of course, the incentives can also sort of affect both the development cost and the value components of the feasibility equation. Upstoning on a site can also help to offset the impacts of inclusionary requirements. So when you have a site and you increase the allowable density on that site, that increase in density creates additional value on the site, which can help to offset the impact of inclusionary requirements. Oftentimes, when there are various incentives that are offered, developers may have the option to pursue additional density. For example, under a density bonus scenario. But not all, but the density is not always the incentive that developers are seeking. Often they're looking for other types of waivers from development standards such as waivers on height limits, parkings, parking and setbacks, rather than the density increase as, as a way to offset those impacts. The components of an inclusionary ordinance typically include sections to define the purpose and provide definitions within the ordinance. And then also to lay out basic visions of the ordinance, which we'll be talking about several of these over the next few slides. So this typically includes the affordability requirements, how many units need to be affordable and at what levels, and how those units will be reserved for households at various income levels. It often includes exemptions, so for other types of projects that would be exempt from the ordinance, and how the jurisdiction would deal with fractional requirements for fractional units. It will typically address the design of BMR units, specifically in relation to how the design of BMR units may or may not vary from the other units in the project and also the timing for the construction of those units. The ordinance will lay out alternative means of compliance, which we'll be discussing in more detail. Operations and reporting, which is, relates to agreements that developers typically need to sign as a part of this, as a part of an inclusionary housing ordinance, agreeing to make their units affordable and agreeing to make them affordable for a specific amount of time. And then also any incentives that are included as part of the ordinance. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Barry to talk about learning from our neighbors.
Great. Thanks, Stephanie. And as an earlier slide showed, this is becoming more and more common in California overall and particularly in the East Bay cities. As was shown in the earlier slide, most of the communities that have not adopted inclusionary zoning yet are planning on adopting it or at least studying it through their housing element updates. The only reason that we don't know about Martinez is they have not finished their housing element yet, so it hasn't been posted to their website. But they may well be considering an ordinance as well. We did speak with the planners at the cities that you see here and also collected their ordinances and studied them and looked at kind of what was the best we could learn from each of their ordinances? And how could we create something that would work for Moraga that also reflected the successes that were happening in these other communities? So most of our slides have kind of benchmarks to what's going on in the neighboring cities in central Contra Costa County. The first question and really the most basic aspect of this ordinance is what percentage of the units are we going to require be affordable and affordable to whom? In other words, are they moderate? Are they low? Are they very low? So what is the percentage and who is our target income group? Most of the ordinances for the cities in central Contra Costa County are using somewhere between 10% and 15%. In other words, if you build a market rate project, then 10 to 15% of the units must be dedicated as affordable. There is a great difference in the flexibility that's, that you see in these ordinances. Some are very specific and say you must do 10%. Others are saying, well, you can do 10% if you do this, but if you provide a deeper level of affordability, like for, if you, if you set the units aside for very low income households, we'll let you use a smaller percentage of the units and so on. What we observed is that most of the units that are for sale are targeted to moderate and lower income households. And again, for a benchmark, the income for a lower income household of four is $109,600. For a moderate is considerably higher than that, close to $150,000. And then the for rent units are typically targeted to either low income or very low income or a combination of low and very low income households. Some communities vary their percentages so that there's a different requirement for single family homes or multifamily homes. That can help you achieve your arena targets. So again, one of the goals of this process is to come up with an ordinance that helps us produce not just moderate income housing, but some units that may be very low income, some units that may be low income, and some units that may be moderate. So these are all the factors. So I'm not going to walk through all of the cities that are on the table here, but you can see that those numbers are generally at 10, 15%. There are any of a number of variations between how different cities are capturing that. And we can come back to this if there are any specific questions about what each of the cities is doing. But this kind of gives you that sense of the variation in it. And it very much is not a case where one size fits all. In fact, I was a little surprised when we did this exercise. Every city was different. So that was kind of a learning experience right there. So one point, and I think this is really important. There's been some discussion in our previous meetings with the council about, well, what happens in single, single family neighborhoods? How do we deal with this? And maybe we don't do this in single family neighborhoods. So that was one of the things that we looked at and what we learned is that a few of the communities are allowing the inclusionary requirement to be met in their single family neighborhoods simply by letting folks build accessory dwelling units in those subdivisions. And we actually are seeing this here in, in Moraga without, without any sort of mandate to do this. It's a marketing tool to really add value to the unit. So for example, the town of Danville does not require deed restrict, deed restrictions on its ADUs. It presumes that because ADUs are relatively small and built into the primary home, that they're going to be affordable by design, at least to moderate income households and maybe to some lower income households if they're small. Even in Danville, they recognize not all of the ADUs are going to be occupied or used as rentals. But they're requiring in new subdivisions that 25% of all the units have ADUs. So even if only half of them are actually used as rentals, that's still getting you more than you would get if you didn't have any requirement for those areas at all. And again, with multi-generational families and remote work, there's a strong market demand for ADUs in newer subdivisions. And they can be incorporated as really as an amenity that can increase the value of the property and this potential sales price of property for the developer. So in this case, just to summarize what we are recommending, you consider would be a 10% affordability requirement. And for, for sale units, that would be 10% toward moderate income housing. We would allow a developer to build a smaller percent than 10% if those were low income units. However, that would need to be, what that percentage would be has, has not yet been determined. That's something we would need to work out based on economics and other factors. For rent, for rental units, we're recommending a 10% low income set aside. And then again, there'd be a methodology for reducing that so that it could be a lower percent, say 5 or 6% if those units were set aside for very low income households, which, which is serving a different segment of our Rena assignment. We'd also recommend that the ordinance include a provision to review the effectiveness in two or three years to ensure that it's doing its job and promoting the development of affordable housing. So I'm going to go through policy consideration two and then Stephanie will handle a few after that. So this particular issue is how do you handle small projects and what we call fractional units? So a fractional unit is what happens when you have a percentage requirement and you apply it to the number of units in a project and you don't end up with a round number. You end up with something like, oh, we need to provide, you know, 1.4 units or 1.7 units. Well, you, you obviously can't build 4/10 of a housing unit. So that's often converted into a fee, an in lieu fee. And that's something that we're, we're suggesting be done here as well. And that fee, excuse me, second. That fee is based on the gap between an affordable unit and a market rate unit. So there's a price differential between affordable and market rate that would be used to calculate that gap. And those fees are typically used for assisting projects that are 100% affordable. They could be used for housing programs. So you would need a fair amount of money to be generated before you could actually take that in lieu fee and use it to develop a 100% affordable housing project. But there are a number of other program items that could be, could be completed with the fee. So here are the, here are the exemptions and the fractional units information for the other cities that we looked at. You can see the exemptions for the seven cities and how they handle the fees. In some cases, they round the fractional units up to one or down to zero. For example, if you look at Lafayette, they don't collect a fee if it's less than five. If it's more than point, sorry, 0.5, if it's more than 0.5, they round it up to one. I would say most of the communities convert the fractional units into in lieu fees, which means an in lieu fee amount has to be calculated. Again, here's the summary of that information. The percentage requirements mostly result in odd numbers or numbers that are, that have this, this fractional component. So these are treated differently by every jurisdiction we looked at. We're recommending that projects with fewer than five units be exempt from the requirement. And that projects with five to nine units pay a fractional in lieu fee. And then projects with more than 10 units pay an in lieu fee for their fractional units. So again, going back to this example, this bullet point here, if you have a project with 15 units, you're going to provide one inclusionary unit and then you're going to convert the 0.5 into a fee that is, is equivalent to the cost of providing a half of an affordable housing unit. Really, it's the gap between the affordable and the market rate unit. Stephanie, do you want to take three, four and five?
Yeah, thanks, Barry. Okay, so policy consideration three is related to alternate means of compliance. Under state law, specifically 8505, all jurisdictions that have an inclusionary ordinance are also required to provide developers with an alternative to building those units on site. Of the alternatives that a lot of jurisdictions implement, an in lieu fee is the most common. You don't, you're not required to have an in lieu fee as one of your options. For a small town like Moraga, an in lieu fee may not be the ideal choice as your, as an alternate means of compliance, partly because it, it takes staff to collect the fee and implement the fee, figure out how to disperse the revenues from the fee to, in most cases, a developer that would build a 100% affordable project. So that can be tricky for a small town. You do have the ability to make your off-site alternatives intentionally less attractive than building inclusionary units as part of your development in order to incentivize developers to provide inclusionary units within their projects rather than pursue one of the off-site options. Many ordinances for the alternate means of compliance section provides sort of a menu of options. So this could include building affordable units off-site at a, that are not part of the project in a different location. Donating land that would be used to build an affordable housing development or requiring and rehabilitating existing units, usually with a deed restriction attached to that as part of the rehabilitation to make those units affordable. And here we have what your neighboring jurisdictions do related to some of their alternate means of compliance. So you'll see that there are a few that offer an off-site development option that require more units if the developer pursues the off-site option compared to the number of units that would be required on site. So for, in the case of Clayton, you have one and a half times. Essentially, if the developer has a project that, say, would require five inclusionary units, if they were to build those units in the project, they have to build one and a half times that amount if they're building off-site. So seven and a half, and then whatever you're doing with the rounding of the fractional units. Concorda and Lafayette, the requirement is twice the amount. So in that, for that project that would be required to provide five, they provide them on site. That leads to a requirement for 10 if they're going for the off-site option. There is also the Pleasant Hill example that allows for rehab of existing housing to make those units affordable. In that case, they require that the number of units in that rehabilitated development would be four times the amount that would be required for the on-site requirement. San Ramon and Walnut Creek both sort of have a, a little bit of a discretionary policy involved there. So for San Ramon, the reviewing authority allows for off-site, but needs to find that it has a greater or equivalent benefit to providing units on site. And in Walnut Creek, the council needs to find that providing units on site would be feasible. So you can see that there's a real mix of how different.
Stephanie's frozen, I think, or am I frozen?
You're okay.
Okay.
Am I back?
You're back.
Okay. Do you need me to go over that again?
I think we're probably ready for the next slide. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Okay, so the staff recommendation related to alternate means of compliance is to allow developers to acquire existing multifamily units that are located elsewhere in Moraga and rehabilitate those units. But in those cases, the number of units that would need to be rehabilitated would be twice the number that would be required on site. Another option would be to construct new affordable units on site, but to make that required, or sorry, off-site, but to make that requirement equal to 15% of the project that originates the inclusionary requirement rather than the 10 that would be required on site. A third option would be to donate land to an affordable housing developer. So these three options would all be options that a developer could select from if they wanted to do something other than provide the affordable units as inclusionary units within their project. And then the fourth bullet here specifies that the off-site units would need to come online concurrently with the related residential project. So you can't build your market rate project and then, you know, wait several years before doing your affordable contribution through one of these other methods. Policy consideration four relates to design and timing. Most inclusionary ordinances provide some guidance on the design of BMR units, particularly related to how those units look and other design related, related elements compared to the rest of the project. So some of the key items that these ordinances can address are the size of BMR units. Particularly, are they the same size as the rest of the units in the project on average? Are that your, could they be a little bit smaller? The number of bedrooms in the BMR units compared to the mix of unit types, the number of bedrooms in the rest of the project. Access to common amenities. So are residents that live in the BMR units able to access the same community amenities as the rest of the residents in the project? So this would be, you know, if there's a pool or a community room. So this would be, you know, if there's a pool or a community room, you know, a shared open space. Interior finishes, so there are some ordinances that call for the same interior finishes in the BMR units that all the other units have, and then others allow for some variation, typically with a clause that says that the interior finishes regardless need to be made of durable materials and, you know, relatively high quality, but they don't need to be quite as high quality as in the market rate units. And then finally, housing type for BMR units, so this is, you know, if you have a, Barry was touching on that, you know, for sale developments, and can you meet that requirement through rental units or through ADUs or some other type of unit that differs from the type of unit in the rest of the development? So ordinances vary in the extent to which they specify that all of these factors need to be the same for the BMR unit compared to the rest of the units in the project. There's often a little bit of variation involved, at least on some of these dimensions. And then the timing issue is just having BMR units come online concurrently with market rate units. This is a pretty typical requirement. So regardless of how a developer is meeting their BMR requirement, ensuring that the timing of construction and the timing of whether the units are compatible is concurrent or prior to the timing for the market rate units. And so here we see how some of your neighbors are dealing with some of these issues. You'll see that you're distributed, that when it comes to how units need to be distributed within the project, most of your neighbors are saying that the BMR units should be sort of evenly dispersed within the development, with Danville being the exception. In terms of dwelling type, most of the jurisdictions are saying that needs, that the dwelling type that meets the BMR requirement needs to be the same as the dwelling type in the rest of the project. Danville, again, is the exception, and then Walnut Creek, I believe silent on this, but they do specify that the exterior design needs to be the same for the BMR units. Sort of a similar pattern with number of bedrooms. In most cases, your neighbors are saying that the number of bedrooms, the bedroom mix among the BMR units needs to sort of mirror the bedroom mix in the rest of the development with a couple of exceptions. And all of these ordinances do allow for reduced level of interior amenities within the BMR units. So that's, you know, what's inside of the units themselves. Staff's recommendation related to design and timing is to require that units have the same, the BMR units would have the same exterior design features as the rest of the units in the development and would be dispersed throughout the development. That it is acceptable to provide a lesser level of interior finishes, that residents in the BMR units would have access to the same common amenities as residents living in the market rate units, that there would, the BMR unit mix would have a comparable number of bedrooms compared to the rest of the development with an exception for ADU units, so it would not just part of single family developments. And that BMR units can be up to 15% smaller in terms of square footage compared to the rest of units in the development, and that all offset units would come online concurrently with the related residential project. Policy consideration number five relates to the length of affordability. So this is the, when a new development is built that has inclusionary units, there is a time period that's attached to those units that say how long the units are required to remain affordable. So for rental units, this is sort of a little bit more straightforward. It's just the time period under which those rents are restricted. For for sale units, there's usually a resale restriction that says that when the first buyer of the unit sells, there's a restriction on how much they can sell that sale, they can sell that unit for, and that restriction runs with the unit for a certain period of time. So of the communities that we've been looking at, six of them apply a 55-year affordability term to rental units. So units that are built through the inclusionary ordinance or rental units need to remain affordable for 55 years. Five of the seven specify that ownership units need to remain affordable for 45 to 55 years, somewhere in that range among those five to seven, sorry, five of the seven communities. We'll also note that projects that receive a density bonus are subject to limitation. They also are subject to requirements for how long they, those units need to remain affordable as part of the state density bonus ordinance. So that'd be 55 years for rental or 45 for for sale. Staff's recommendation related to length of affordability, we're going to apply a 55-year affordability term for rental units and 45 years for owner occupied units. And to, but the ADU option would not have deed restrictions when we get to affordability. And with that, I'm gonna pass it back over to Barry.
Great, thanks Stephanie. So we've got two more topic areas to walk through. The policy consideration six is whether the inclusionary requirement would apply townwide or just in the commercial districts. And this is, again, something we talked a little bit about at the May meeting and also in the Housing Element hearings before sending the document off to HCD. It was pointed out that Lafayette only requires the inclusionary requirement in their downtown. It turned out that Lafayette is actually the only city, not just in Contra Costa County, but in Contra Costa and Alameda Counties that has that requirement. All of the other cities that's, 11 out of 14 in Alameda County that have inclusionary requirements are due jurisdiction wide. The Lafayette example is really a legacy of the fact that the city had a redevelopment agency, and the redevelopment agency under state law was mandated to have 15% of all housing units be affordable, so that requirement remained after redevelopment was dissolved. And it's something that might, that could be changed in the future to apply more broadly. So we are recommending, in this case, that the town apply the inclusionary ordinance townwide, and this really is partially to meet the state's mandate that we affirmatively further fair housing, meaning that lower income housing opportunities are not just created in our two commercial districts, but are also created to the extent possible in other parts of the community. But to provide us an option to setting aside units with deed restricted, low or moderate income units, the option of setting aside 25% of the units in each new development project as ADUs, again, with no deed restrictions. So the last topic area is the incentives, and as was mentioned earlier in the presentation, most of these ordinances have a section which essentially says, we know that the set aside of these, of these units for particular income groups has a cost impact. We're going to offset that cost impact by granting you some incentives to waive development standards or to allow additional density and so forth. And interestingly, this comes in tandem with the state density bonus laws, which were strengthened pretty dramatically a couple of years ago through AB 2345, to the point that the density bonus laws are very, the incentives that are offered through that program are fairly generous and most cases supplant the need for local incentives. It's worth noting that state density bonus law is voluntary while inclusionary zoning would be mandatory if adopted, but you would still expect that most of the applicants who are required to provide a set aside of affordable units would use the state density bonus law because of the incentives it provides. So just as a reminder of what the state density bonus law does, it recognizes that projects that include affordable units get a bonus, which allows them to increase the number of units in the project altogether. And depending on the percentage of affordability, they may get concessions and waivers of different development standards as well, and that those standards would offset costs that they would otherwise incur if they complied with the community's zoning standards. So these are things like setbacks and lot coverage and parking and so forth. I'm just going to put this on the slide for a second. This is a complicated table, but what it shows is the state density bonuses are calculated on a sliding scale that considers both the percentage of units that are affordable and the income groups that those units are serving. So what we're talking about are the two red circles here for our rental units. They would be at 10% for low income, which would equil, be equivalent to a 20% density bonus. And for the for sale units, there would be 5% moderate, and actually it was, I believe it's 10, sorry, 10% moderate, which gets you a 5% density bonus. So this is what would apply in for sale projects. So by using the state density bonus chart, we're basically saying, these are the incentives you're entitled to simply by following the inclusionary requirement. We have two examples just to walk through. This first one is a rental project, and this assumes we have a 10% inclusionary requirement. A developer owns a five acre site. They've got our new zoning density of 24 units per acre, and under that zoning, they're entitled to build 120 units, and we're saying 12 of those units must be affordable to lower income, 10% under our ordinance. What we're saying is that the state allows a 20% density bonus if you provide those units onsite, and that is equivalent to 24 additional units. So you can now build 144 units on that site, and you're entitled to a concession such as additional height or reduced parking to make that project work. That developer could also propose on their own to go beyond the town's requirement and build, make those units affordable to very low income instead of low income. They would then be eligible for a deeper affordability percentage, a higher affordability percentage of 32.5%, which would allow more units in the project and a second concession. So there's a, there's a kind of this intrinsic relationship between what we're doing and the density bonus program. I want to point out that this program is in effect now. It's a state requirement. So this is not something we're imposing by adopting inclusionary zoning. These are current state laws that are already in effect, but most developers aren't using these, these density bonus incentives. If the town adopts a mandatory requirement to set aside low, certain number of units as low income, we would expect more developers would be using the incentive program that's available to them. So let's say that it's the same site, but you have a developer who wants to build town homes instead of condos or rental apartments, and they want to make those for sale, but they don't really need the density bonus. They're only going to build 80 units on the site, and we're telling them that eight of those units need to be affordable to moderate income households. Even though they may not add a density bonus to that project, they're still eligible under state density bonus law to use a concession such as a reduced setback or a reduced parking in order to minimize the impact of setting aside 10% of those units as affordable to moderate income. So I guess the lesson here is the density bonus law, you don't necessarily need to take the density to use some of the incentives that are available to your project, so you can still use the waivers and concessions. So our next steps really are to get direction from the council on the policy considerations. We will draft an ordinance for consideration first by the planning commission and then bring that back to you towards the end of the year and ask for your consideration to adopt that ordinance. And we have tentative dates here of November 16th and December 14th for those meetings. Just to summarize, and these are the, I believe, the matrix slides that we were, that the mayor was referring to earlier. It's really a summary of the topics raised in this report, the policy issues in each case, percentage required, the income group targeted, how to handle accessory dwelling units for those who wanted to use them in lieu of setting aside units with deed restrictions, the exemptions and the fractional units, the alternate means of compliance, the design options, the length of affordability, townwide versus commercial, and then the incentives. So I will stop my screen share. I expect I may bring that slide, that set of slides back up later on when we get into discussion. There's a lot on the table for consideration. Thank you.
Wow, wow. Very, thank you very much. We, hopefully everybody, the rest of the time, council members, your heads are not swimming like mine is swimming, but we've been at this for an hour and 45 minutes. Do we need a break? No one is shaking their heads yes, so let's, let's continue on. Then I would propose that this is a good time for questions. Do any of the town council members have questions of staff? Teresa, I saw your hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment Stephanie and Barry and Afshah and everyone that worked on the staff report. You know, I've read a lot of staff reports over the years, and this one, I think, is probably the best I've ever read. It, you know, is a lot of material, but the way you spoon fed it to us was greatly appreciated. So, great job. And my question is about the 1505 with offsite. I thought, and I guess, I guess I'm wrong, you know, Lafayette had the idea that it has to be within the downtown area, and for us, that would be the infill area. But what I'm hearing tonight, and I, I like that idea, and I like that idea for many reasons. One, one reason is transportation, because both REEM, especially REEM, has three exits out, or exits out or in to town. And when we moved here, we didn't have any money and we had one car, and we used the public transportation. And I, I would think that that would work very well. It worked well for us for many, many years, and I would think that that would work well for, you know, people who live in condos or apartments or something, you know, in those two areas. So I guess, are you saying that, that we have to have this townwide even though, to me, it makes the most sense to have these in the two shopping centers where there's jobs and transportation? It's kind of a long way of asking this question.
Sure, yeah. So you don't have to have it townwide. We're recommending that it be townwide, but the reality is that the projects are still going to be in the two shopping centers because that's where the zoning capacity is for the multifamily housing. What we're saying is that in the single family, new single family areas, this would not affect existing single family neighborhoods at all, but if someone builds a new single family subdivision and the requirement applied to them, they could meet it by simply including ADUs in the new subdivision. And that's a better alternative than just saying they're off and they don't have to do anything in those neighborhoods. From an equity perspective and from an affirmatively furthering fair housing, it spreads that responsibility so that developers address it regardless of where they're building.
So I, I'm not sure you really answered my question.
Oh, sorry.
I, I understand, thank you. Thank you for trying. So I understand that if, you know, there's only a few areas in town where it's possible to build. I mean, we're almost built out. You know, there's just like Camino Pablo area and Indian Valley, so, and Bolinger. So, so those areas could, I suppose, they could do the, you know, the apartments and condominiums and everything, but they wouldn't have the transportation. So are we, but they could do the ADUs. So are we saying that they have to do, if we say it's not just in our infill, that they have to do apartments and condos and those things? I'm not understanding what you're saying.
So, to the mayor, those areas where the subdivisions are proposed are low density. The zoning is low density and it will remain low density. It is not intended to have multifamily.
Okay.
So the multifamily is in the commercial areas.
Right.
So what we're saying is developers are doing subdivisions anyways. ADUs are an amenity to the developers, and this is something that we could use as an easy way. And this is something that we could use as an easy way to add to that Reno pool that we need to meet.
So can we make it clear that the developers?
Time, timeout, I'm sorry, timeout. Denise is 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 looking to interject for a minute.
Well, I I'm sorry, no, uh council member Nona can finish and then I'll, I'll jump in. It's not that important, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I thought you were, I thought, I thought there might be a discrimination issue that you were gonna weigh in on.
Well, I was gonna weigh in on that, but I wanted to let council member Nona finish and then um and then you can provide that in.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, now I have to figure out where I was in this. Um so give me a minute here. So is there a way that we can um guarantee that the housing that we want is, is the housing where we want it?
Yes, you're already doing it through your zoning ordinance.
Okay, great.
So I mean, that does not allow for multifamily in the single family neighborhoods.
Okay, good. And and I don't want any, anybody to think that I'm discriminating. I know from my own experience, it's easier to have, you know, have transportation when you only have one car.
Sure, good point. Uh Denise, could you communicate what you want to communicate at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just gonna add that as Steph has mentioned, the the reason, part of the reason why there's a recommendation that this be implemented townwide is because there could be an argument that this type of, applying this type of inclusionary zoning ordinance only in areas where, in only specific areas of the town will ultimately concentrate and segregate the um minority groups or other groups that will take advantage of low uh or moderate income uh housing. So we, the recommendation would allow the affordability um the affordability housing to be spread throughout the town rather than concentrating it in only certain areas of the town. As Director Hamid said, the zoning remains unchanged. The zoning is in place. This would just allow developers to take, uh to use the affordability requirements in the inclusionary zoning ordinance to, to expand affordable housing throughout the town where it's appropriately zoned.
Mike, you had your hand up?
No, Renato's before me. Did you wanna go, Renato?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike, please.
Okay, thank you. Um so I had this topic on my list um as well. And by the way, I just wanted to point out that the comparable towns in those, that was great information, but many of those are much bigger than us and they don't have the very high fire hazard and high fire hazards we have. So we're different and we're unique, but it was great information. On this issue, so when we talk strategy, the council is unanimous in saying these units should go to our two commercial areas. That's where you get the different type of housing stock and will be able to have the different income levels. Traffic is minimized, these people can walk from where they live to where they wanna shop. And from a fire safety perspective, the safest place you can live in Maraga is in Maraga Center. It does not have a high or very high fire hazard. And by the way, the fire chief and police chief have designated the Maraga Center as a TRA. It's temporary refuge area. So when there's a fire, they may direct people to the Maraga Center because it's safe. So those are, a lot of good things on the strategy. So now we get to the ordinance. This is the tool and that was a great session, Barry, you had on tools. We couldn't afford many of those, but this one we can. So now this is a tool in my mind to execute the strategy. So I sort of started with the idea, well, the tool should follow the strategy and we'll do it at the two commercial centers. So I've heard the arguments in the fair housing issue, but let's take some examples. So let's say if we go outside the two commercial centers. And we have um a development of a hundred and fifty uh units currently zoned in a very high fire hazard area on the city limits of the town. Okay, and if we had this inclusionary ordinance townwide, there's a ten percent requirement. So they would have to have fifteen ADUs on those hundred and fifty, let's call them above market lots, is that correct?
Uh the way we've set it up, they'd, they would have more than fifteen. Because if they're using ADUs with no deed restrictions, then it would be twenty five percent of the one hundred and fifty.
Right, or or fifteen, it's fifteen if it's deed restricted.
Yes.
Okay.
If there were deed restriction.
No deed restriction.
Right.
Wait, which is your recommendation? Okay, fine. Let's just see, so, so they do the ADUs to meet inclusionary housing requirement. Then are they not eligible for a twenty percent, because I lost it a little bit in the slide, a twenty percent density bonus? So now they can build another twenty percent above market units or another thirty units? Or or did I miss that?
So they would be ineligible for a density bonus because the units would not meet the state requirements for density bonus, which would be the deed restriction. So the only way that they could get a density bonus is if they followed all the other state requirements. Um unless the town council chose to write the ordinance so that it granted them that uh that as an incentive. But under the state density bonus law, if there's no deed restriction on those ADUs, they would not be eligible for a state density bonus.
Okay, because I was a little worried that we're adding potentially up to thirty, fifty percent more units in areas that we don't really want them in very high fire hazard. So that helps me quite a bit. Now let's say that, let's say we look at it from another perspective. Because Denise made the good point about what about affordability of low and and moderate income units throughout the town on new developments? If we didn't have this inclusionary housing requirement throughout the town and only at the two commercial centers. You know, by law, you know, people builders can say, I wanna build a hundred and fifty lots and I want, you know, twenty five percent ADUs. Staff had mentioned in Powell's, Colorado, more than ten years ago, a hundred and twenty three units with thirty ADUs. So the general market may very well create the ADUs and create this additional low income housing in new developments. That's, I'm just saying, it's another way I'm thinking of this. So if you have any comments on that, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, no, I would say that you, you know, it's a marketing amenity. And so even if you don't adopt the requirement, you may still have developers proposing ADUs. This is a step that the town can take proactively to ensure that there are at least some units that are produced uh in those, in those areas. There's no, because otherwise there would be no hook to make that happen. It's strictly the private, the the, up to the developer.
And I, and I believe that some of the changes that are just happening now with housing, with kids boomeranging home because of the cost of housing and with people working from home and using ADUs as their office, that you're gonna see a lot more ADUs um on new development anyway. And when you do an ADU, when you're um, you know, doing the development, doing the plan, it's easier than trying to figure out where we're gonna fit it after you've already put your house on your lot in the most ideal situation. So I think we're gonna see more than twenty five percent ADUs, that's my prediction.
Okay, well, thank you, that answered my question on this topic.
Thank you, uh Renato, you're, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so I I think um there were two concerns raised before about um a townwide uh application of inclusionary ordinance. One was uh unduly um upsetting ex- existing residential, not upsetting in the emotional sense, but you know, um uh changing residential neighborhoods. But that, that what I'm hearing, if I'm correct, is addressed, that concern is laid by, one, the zoning. And two, by uh if you have a exemption from the requirement for five or fewer. That is realistically um an exemption from, from the inclusion ordinance for, for the, for those neighborhoods, right? That combination is kind of a bulwark against that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so then likewise, one of the things we've been working mightily to do and and you guys have, have helped us figure this out is um to uh to the extent possible to keep keep, you know, the high density stuff and away from the periphery of the town. To, you know, protect our open space, protect our hillsides, protect our ridge lines. And so the, some of the tools that you're recommending and and that other jurisdictions have done, including the ADUs counting. And uh for example, transfer rights to other locations in town. And maybe a combination of other sort of waivers, exemptions, incentives could organically drive um the additional units away from the peripheral areas and and back into the center of town. Is that, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh y- you are, and uh there'd be no scenario where there would be additional density placed in the single family neighborhoods. Uh because the zoning would have to change to make that happen. So this is all done within the existing zoning.
Okay, um and Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask one more question. So um
Sure.
Everybody's kind of doing this right now or recently, right? All the other cities. Um is there any data out there on, you know, because for example, if if we adopt a, an approach where it's ten percent, but there's, maybe it's, you know, seven percent for low income or six percent for very low income. Those percentages you have not recommended, how are you gonna go about? Um if we choose to go in that direction, how are you gonna go about coming back to us with, with the recommendation of what number that should be?
Now, there's um, there's a level of economic analysis that has to happen to determine how you translate a ten percent low requirement into a very low requirement. Um to determine what the, what the, what the dollar amount would be, we haven't done that yet. I mean, that would be a task to be included as part of this, uh because that is what sets your fees also.
And 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 Barry, if I may, just is, is there a city out there that's been doing this long enough that there's actually some relevant information of what works and what doesn't work?
Um yeah, I think there are many. There, th- this is not new and um, you know, that we can draw from experiences in any of a number of cities. Um including those that may be more like Maraga that are in other counties that have the fa- the high fire hazard danger and so forth. Um so that we can be looking more at comparable terrain and constraints and so forth. Yeah.
And we'll get back to you with more of the details about how we, we might recommend if it's a ten percent low, how we would handle very low, because you might be able to say, or equivalent very low and do the calculation at that time. We'll look into that, that's, that's more of the details and kind of the policy direction. So what we're looking for tonight is really the direction.
Okay, thank you, Sora.
Thank you. So um I thought that it was, you know, useful um that council member McCrory was asking about examples and I wanted to kind of jump off of that. Because while examples are helpful, I also wanna understand and make sure that I'm I'm processing this correctly, that even if the scenario described about potentially putting um because if we adopt a townwide ordinance, which means that in areas that we have zoned as lower density, there still could be projects that have uh ADUs and that increase um the amount of um the amount of uh homes in those areas. But that, that doesn't mean that that just magically like happens. I mean, we're talking, we, when we approved and went through the detailed working draft housing element, wild safety, fire and emergency, pre- preparedness planning, preparedness planning, we even moved that up in um as a program in the draft housing element, as a program that we wanted to put forth as a priority, something that is at the top of mind in our, in our um element. So can you kind of like, one, confirm that like that is where we landed on that? And two, that that would always come and be taken to an account? It, it wouldn't just be, but because we have a townwide inclusionary ordinance, that these projects, you know, are always going to be deemed as a green light go?
Um yeah, I can confirm that. And that's a part of the environmental review process that goes with any project, is looking at wildfire safety, uh meeting with police and fire and looking at evacuation hazard and the adequacy of roads in and out, um including townwide roads. Um the other thing I guess I would want to point out too is that we're not requiring that ADUs be occupied, um nor that they be rented. And so just because there is an ADU in a residence is not the same as there are that many additional households that would be added to that community. Um and it would be interesting actually to get some survey data on what percentage of ADUs are used for housing versus for offices or guest quarters. And and that's another data point that could be helpful in that um equation.
Good, the chair, I just um also wanna say when we had discussions with our neighboring cities, um both Arinda and Lafayette have also undertaken evacuation studies, which we will also be coming back to council with. Um and they have both undertaken those studies because most of their cities, Arinda and Lafayette, are very high fire severity zones. Um so that is something that they are doing as part of their housing elements.
Thank you. Okay, and then my last question, I guess for now. Um so in prior conversations and meetings, we've heard from developers, we know that parking has come up in multiple of those conversations. So I wanna make sure I understand um the state density bonus guy incentives. Um I think I heard you say, but I wanna better understand that even if the developer doesn't opt to take the density in terms of increasing the amount of units, they can still um benefit from the other concessions, including the parking reductions. So that's always going to be there and is a way to help pencil a project um where parking, you know, is a barrier and we heard that parking was a barrier.
Yes, that's correct. The um state density bonus has its own set of parking standards that is fairly close to what we've been talking about. Um I think the one difference is the two bedroom requirement is one point five spaces instead of two spaces.
Thank you.
Renato?
Mr. Mayor, did you wanna ask questions before I go again?
You, you go ahead.
Um if I understood, one of the last recommendations, it was to just um go in terms of waivers and incentives, just go with the state bonus, density bonus, is that right?
Yes.
Can, can you um, cause, cause an alternative scenario, right, is for us to locally, in the interest of trying to exercise, to hold on to some local control, uh to try to replicate at a local level uh incentives and waivers and, you know, concessions, if you will, that are akin to the ones that are in the state but density bonus. Why would one not go that way?
Uh I would have said you would definitely wanna go that way before twenty twenty, when the state density bonus laws were not as uh generous as they are now. They're very hard to beat. Uh and I think that's really the, the, the reason is, you know, they're giving you a twenty percent bonus just for ten percent low income. Um you know, that's, m- many of the communities that developed their own local density bonus programs aren't using them anymore because they, they can't compete with the state bonus program as it stands right now. We don't know whether that's gonna stay the same in the future, uh whether the state density bonus law may change. But um at this point in time, the incentives that it grants a developer are very, they're, they're hard to beat.
I, I just wanna add that in, in some ways, which called, it's called the state density bonus law, but it's the concessions piece that I think will really have an impact on Maraga. So what, what we'll do when we're looking at the policy, if we'll see if there's a way that we can craft some of the concessions, and I don't know if we can, to be kind of clear objectively about kind of what it is as opposed to leaving it, oh, you can ask for anything. I think it would just make it easier for the developer to know what seems kind of within range and it would be easier for staff and the planning commission and the council then to move forward with the project. So um we'll have to get into the weeds of that through the drafting of the policy.
Yeah, and thank you, because that really was my first. Yeah, and thank you, because that really was my focus. It was more on the concessions and having control over those. And then and then to the extent that, you know, if you think about this from the developer's perspective, and and is this an attractive jurisdiction to build below-market housing? Um, one would think that, you know, if if you've got the local concessions, that um that there is some element of predictability that might facilitate this actually happen.
So, yeah, think about that. Uh, a quick reminder, right? You know, we're in questions right now, and um we need to get to public input and then move on to providing input on a very, very, what I find to be a very, very complex project, which I'm not sure we're gonna really focus on perhaps in these final um um set of variables tonight. Um, if I can, if I can spend a little bit of time, uh, Barry, just confirming the state density bonus uh law. My 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 understanding is the incentive or the advantage is really to the developer, not necessarily to the town. It it's it's more liberal to the developer. Is that not correct than what the uh the towns are generally offering?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. It was really intended for that purpose.
Okay, and 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 really, what you described, what I saw was was more complimentary, not one versus the other. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, uh, I I have just a couple of uh more down in the weeds. I may come back up higher when we get to input. Um, when when you reference of uh uh alternative uh off-site housing, are we talking uh potentially out of the town?
Uh, I, Stephanie, you can feel free to weigh in. I believe that, no, we're not. We're talking about somewhere else in the town of Maraga.
Okay, within the town, because somewhere in other areas, you referenced that, you know, the it has to be within the town, and the off-site, I didn't see that being defined as being within the town. Um, and, you know, u- under the design feature um cases for, you know, the, it appears like uh fifteen percent smaller being allowed. Um, what's the basis for selecting fifteen percent as opposed to twenty percent or ten percent? Is is there a basis for that?
I I it's something that I would say that number is preliminary, and we would want to probably look at a few more ordinances before we absolutely positively say that's that's the number. Um, it's a preliminary placeholder at this point.
But the idea is that it wouldn't necessarily be noticeable when you look at the all all the homes that, oh, that one is smaller.
Right, sure enough. Uh, that answers my questions. I had extensive discussions with staff uh the other day, and I think some of that will come out when we get into the input part of this. Thank you. Uh, that com- does that complete our questions? Because then we're gonna go into a public, I'm gonna open it up, the meeting for public input. And I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand yet, saying that they need a break, so we're gonna continue on. The first hand I see is, uh, so I opened the meeting for public input. Uh, Nick Campens, if uh we will elevate Nick and and Nick, you're now live.
Hi, hi, um, Nick Campens. I've lived in Maraga for about seven years. I am one of the first owners, I think, of a home with an ADU built under the state ordinance. Um, and I just wanted to speak in favor of the, you know, adopting an inclusionary ordinance townwide, um, especially for ADUs. Um, I think we've had a great situation. Our, you know, our son is autistic, and we were able to build an ADU, it all my sister-in-law to move out to help us. Um, and she has a nice place that we built above our garage, and she's been a great addition to the town and a great addition to um the neighborhood. And I think ADUs have the potential to really seamlessly blend in to the community. And I can't tell you how many people have asked for our architect's name, um, our builder's name, wanting to do a similar ADU, whether it's for family members, maybe it's their their parents, or maybe it's their kids who are coming back from college, or um, you know, maybe it's um their au pair, or, you know, a nanny. There's a lot of, a lot of the, there are very many people are interested in the town in ADUs, and I think um they'd be very heavily utilized. And I don't think, I think a lot of the way our town is structured, I think a lot of the residents who would be using ADUs would have those sorts of connections to existing residents. So and and my sister-in-law is low-income as well, so it's had that that benefit as well. So I just wanted to weigh in.
Thank you, thank thank you very much. Um, and I should note for all public, uh, the input will be limited to three minutes apiece. Uh, Renee Zeimer is uh up next. If you could elevate Renee, please. Pardon me.
Good evening, Mayor Walaki. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
So, good evening, uh, members of the council and staff. My name is Renee Zeimer. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Maraga. And like the um, like Nick, I'm speaking tonight also in favor of um ADUs in the inclusionary um um zoning ordinance. Um, in my opinion, ADUs make sense for our town. They are unobtrusive, low-density, low i- impact um uh i- as an approach for increasing our housing stock. Um, they can be used for rental units, for faculty, students, young professionals, our local workforce, and um also offer housing options to Maraga seniors who wish to downsize yet remain in their community, and to our to our kids um who grew up in Maraga and would like to move back but can't afford um Maraga single-family home prices. So personally, as a homeowner, um, I'd be interested in building an ADU. I believe there are steps that the town could take, such as setback adjustments and reduce permitting costs, streamline shorter processing times for reviews, inspections and whatnot um that could um make ADUs even more attracted attractive to Maraga homeowners. And um, and I, you know, also need to say that ADUs, just from a design perspective, um, I think it, they can be built in a way that complements um our homes, blends into the neighborhood. I think it would add value, create uh rentals, uh potential rental spaces to offset building costs, and add an additional um option to the town to meet their housing needs. So I highly recommend that you add um ADUs to the housing element and take steps to in incentivize these dwellings in the plan so that Maraga homeowners can and and will take advantage of what I see as a win-win for all. Thank you.
Steve, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Megs Arthur. If you could uh bring Meg in.
Hi, my name is Megs Arthur, Megan Arthur. Um, thanks so much for having me here tonight. Um, to the Honorable Mayor and the rest of the Town Council, um, I really appreciate you all discussing this issue. Um, I, a little bit of backstory, I'm firmly in favor of inclusionary zoning. I lived in Maraga for seventeen years prior to going off to college, uh, went off to college and lived a a very full life dedicated to public service, which is um different than the the tech salaries that I think are in the rest of the Bay Area. Uh, but as a result, when my husband and I chose to pick Maraga as a place where we hope to raise our family, we simply can't afford the housing costs here. Um, we do, we are able to uh somewhat make amen uh ends meet when it comes to renting. Uh, but this is an incredibly desirable community to live in, and I would think folks like myself, and I think as Renee just kind of spoke to, um, that grew up here and want to raise our kids and family here, um, would also like the opportunity to be able to uh afford housing in this area. The only other thing that I would say is that um I'm a, I I was really involved with Maraga growing up. I'm, I have moved back nine months ago, and I'm I'm getting back involved again. So when you think of kind of the demographic of folks who would actually benefit from from this, it is, it is people like me who have been very engaged, who have good jobs, make decent money, but just simply can't afford um the one point five million dollar homes that our town has. Um, so thank you again, Honorable Mayor and the rest of the Town Council staff. I really appreciate you taking, letting me speak.
Megs, thank you. Next speaker is Kendall Rangan. Kendall, if you'd elevate Kendall.
I'm just uh so thankful for what Mag, Ms. 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 Arthur's just uh said. I, my hat's off to her. We need more people like her. Um, Ms. Arthur, I I am gonna say this to you personally, but I'm gonna say this to everybody. I think it's patently unfair for the public to present this this material tonight in in an unveg- in a really uninvestigated way. This has just basically been presented. It has not really been investigated. There's a lot of things here that are just subjective. And it it is, it the inclusive variance of zoning will still discriminate based on whatever, everything I've heard, which is what the by the laws and the code and the regulations that California has told Maraga they must follow. And uh this is causing this matter, and it's in, basically, they're instructing Maraga to follow uh the the law. And so we have to come up with an expanded affordable housing element. The Town Council needs to stop redefining this matter. And the Town Staff needs to stop avoiding the laws. This is quite clear what we have to do. And the ability for, you're taking the profits away from developers. The Town Manager has specifically changed rules and regulations for developers that takes the profits away from the developers. No developer is going to come here. You're you're talking smoke, and Mr. Miller knows it. What about the future? In eight years, we're going to have another Bay Area government zoning regulation that's going to impose more building. By the way, we have been told by Barry, Mr. Mr. Miller, that they already know that we can afford to expand the traffic pattern in our communities. I didn't hear any of this tonight. He had this in his earlier presentations to the town, and we addressed this, Mr. Miller, you know, wasn't here tonight. So the density problem for the Bay Area governments and the Fire Department, we know we have traffic patterns that can accommodate the growth that we're being required to do. The center of the town is the only answer, by the way. I do believe in that. So everything that you guys are talking about as far as developing in Rehm and Maraga Centers, I think this is the answer. Other cities are not doing the same thing as Maraga, because Maraga is what's, Mr. Miller explained to us, is an affected city, because we haven't addressed these issues for over twenty years.
Kendall, you got, you need to wrap up.
We're an affected city. That's why we're having to deal with these issues. Mr. Miller explained it to us previously, and I don't think that this tonight gave the full facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendall. Our next uh member is Marcia Farrar. Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Marcia.
Hi, um, this is Marcia Farrar, and I live at Five Williams Drive in Maraga. Uh, my husband and I own this home we bought here in nineteen ninety-two, particularly for the good schools here. I want to speak as uh a resident and as a retired healthcare professional in support of inclusionary housing and in support of ADUs as part of that. Um, there are seniors who could benefit from either living in an ADU and having uh younger relatives close by, or living in the main home and having caregivers in the ADU. So I think these are particular people who could benefit from such housing. That's all.
Marcia, thank you so much. And again, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Uh, next we have Kate. If you could elevate Kate, please. Kate, you need to unmute? Kate, can you unmute? Uh, let's move on to Ashley Coats. And we'll come back to Kate.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent, because I couldn't find the unmute button for a while. Um, so I am going to read portions of a letter that has about uh fifteen signers to it, and it starts with, "We, the undersigned, are residents of Maraga. We support strong policies to ensure that a range of housing types at different price points will be built in town during the next few years. The last two housing element cycles, zero housing affordable to low or very low-income people was built. This means um people working under assisted living facilities, our grocery store, our preschools, and restaurants have been forced to live far away and commute long distances, and many employers have had trouble keeping staff. Also, our teachers, first responders, um, even with better incomes, have been priced out of living in Maraga." So it's in our self-interest to add modestly-priced housing in town so that we can compete with other communities for these staff and have enough housing that meets the needs of our students, seniors, young families, and small households. We believe that all home, all uh landowners developing new developments should play a role in providing affordable housing. And um this could be considered with a ten to fifteen percent inclusionary housing requirement townwide. How you get to that is up for decision-making, but um it would certainly, it's based on the density of the zone, and also could be uh in-loo fees rather than onsite, et cetera, et cetera. So you guys get to figure all that out. But we urge you to make sure that you come up with something that is uh requires all landowners to play a role. Thank you.
Ashley, thank you. Uh, let's try Kate again. Will you try to elevate Kate? Can you unmute Kate? Uh, Will?
Uh, Steve?
Yes?
All I can do is send a request to unmute, which I've sent to her a few times now.
Uh, she may be uh absent, so I'm reticent to unmute her, I think. Um, Ashley, are you, are you waiting again? If not, could you lower your hand? And let's move on to Dave Razzoni.
Uh, to uh to the chair, uh, the unmute button uh for Kate, it's at the bottom of your screen. There's a ribbon at the bottom of the screens. It's to the left of Stop Video, so if you decide to come back, you can just click on that.
We'll we'll try Kate once more, after Dave. Dave, you've got three minutes.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, but before you start my time, I have a point of order. I I want to be clear that the staff recommendations that we saw on the PowerPoint tonight, those items and issues and those those positions were not stated in the staff report. Is that correct?
Uh, could, Barry, could you answer that?
Uh, the staff report did not make specific recommendations.
Okay, so now we can start my time. Okay, that leaves
Okay.
That leaves me and the rest of the people, the public listening to this, um, uh, you know, behind the eight ball here. Uh, and frankly, it almost seems as if the thumb has been pressed on the scales already. Uh, so uh before I saw the staff recommendations, I thought it was a good staff report because it laid out generally a lot of the important terms and issues that uh you as a council or we as a town should be discussing. Now, what we're seeing right now is a completely different dynamic, and I'm frankly, I'm disappointed uh to be almost ambushed by looking at this. Now, maybe in in retrospect, once I review the recommendations, my feelings might change, but uh I believe this is an inappropriate way to address the issue. So the bottom line here is, you know, does the town truly want to provide more affordable units? So um I mentioned before that I'm opposed to inclusionary housing. Um, you know, it's been shown that inclusionary housing or zoning can actually You know, it's been shown that inclusionary housing or zoning can actually limit the housing and can actually force uh, an increase in the price of housing for everybody else that buys the remaining housing. So, uh, you know, so inclusionary housing is a cost, no matter how we frame it. And I think it was, um, you know, uh, an educational experience. I don't know if anybody's done this, but they, uh, they went to the inclusionary housing calculator. Uh, you know, that was, uh, that was referenced in, in the staff report. So you go there and you plug in what actually starts with, you know, a bunch of assumptions already. The bottom line here is in the strong market and even in the soft market, but in the strong market for rentable units, low-rise rentable units, uh, it came back as infeasible for any units less than twenty-six units. And, you know, the strong market is basically the Bay Area market. Although I, I think a lot of the, you know, the Bay Area, uh, and if you also read a little, uh, uh, if you get a little more in-depth to the Fremont report, the Fremont report had a lot of interesting information, but the bottom line is Fremont is the epic center of Silicon Valley. We are not Silicon Valley. We don't get the same amount of rents that Silicon Valley gets. And we don't have a lot of the same issues that Fremont has. So, okay. So how are we gonna lower the cost? So right now, that example that was on the web shows that, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-six units, which is more than the twenty-four DUI that you're talking about increasing for, uh, you know, some of our properties, uh, which is now twenty, which you said, you know, should be twenty-four. Uh, but this analysis shows twenty-six is infeasible. You, there's not enough profit, profit to make, uh, to, to have someone start that, that, uh, that construction. So the bottom line here is how do we get the talent? If you're truly, if you truly want to build more affordable units, the only way you're gonna do it is by lowering cost. And everything we're talking about right now and everything the town has in its current ordinances exacerbate the cost. You, you have not rectified the defects in our current code already. You haven't modified the development standards and you haven't removed the, the constraints that are here and you haven't streamlined the process. So the town hasn't actually done that now and now you're talking about adding new costs. So the first thing, we, we, the first thing we should do, I'm, I'm sorry, wrap up, Dave. Thank you. I'm tired of town instituting cost, additional cost, uh, standards or whatever that increase our, uh, 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 our, our, our ability and make it more difficult for us to create a product. And you should not be talking about inclusionary housing until you rectify the current defects. I have a specific plan. We have properties in this, a specific plan that I'm being, uh, bombarded every day saying you're not consistent. There's no streamlining and, uh, and it's questionable even if with twenty-four units, that's a profitable thing. So you're talking about taking, uh, these new laws and passing those and you're going about it the wrong way. You're not talking to the people that actually know what the deal is and you have to change it.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. I need a break.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Maybe before we take a break, we could just confirm there's no further public comment and closed public comment.
Thank you. Kate Beckins is here. Can we, can we, uh, elevate Kate?
It's still not working. Oh, unbelievable. No, it's fine.
Kate, we hear you. We hear you, Kate.
Oh, you can?
Yes, we can.
Okay, technology. It's wonderful when it works and so crazy when it doesn't. Don't know why that happened. Never happened before, but okay, glad I addressed it. Um, so I just want to say I'm a resident of Maraga and I'm really happy to see the town is addressing this issue of how best to address the needs that we have, the need to, uh, are set forth in the RHNA. And it seems to me that what you're trying to do here is to use this inclusionary housing provision as a method by which to encourage, uh, encourage or incentivize new development projects to include, um, below market rate housing. And, um, that of course is a goal of the RHNA and it, I just wanna commend you all because it seems like this is an essential part of moving forward in a, in a way to get this to be satisfied. Um, and so as I understand it, it isn't that you'd go about rezoning anything, but rather that if a developer was going to put in a number of houses, let's say, um, that, that if there was this inclusionary housing provision, that one way to satisfy that might be, for example, that they would in fact add a provision to include ADU units in a, in a variety of those, um, housing units. Not necessarily everyone. I think that Mr. Miller was talking about, there's a percentage that they would be required to comply with. But that that would be a method and not necessarily the only method, but a method by which they could help to satisfy that. And that just seems to me to be another piece or another tool in the toolbox to get to the point of being able to satisfy that requirement. And in fact, obviously we all know, I, I think it's no secret that California needs more housing. So it's a, it's a method by which to really get more developers on board with helping to create that additional housing. So although I, um, am all in favor of ADUs, yes, I, I think we should have more of them and, um, I could go on about that, but I won't. It just seems to me that this inclusionary housing provision, ADU is just one of the methodologies by which that would help to be satisfied. Um, I was under the impression that part of tonight's, um, task was to get a little bit of input about how people in the community might feel about whether or not you all ought to proceed with, uh, further evaluating this concept of inclusionary housing provision. So I just want to go on the record of saying I'm in favor. And, um, I in fact will go further and say, I like the idea that it would be throughout the town and not just in the commercial areas. I actually was, um, lucky enough to go on one of the tours to see the different areas that Maraga might rezone in order to satisfy some of the, um, housing requirements. And I think being able to make it townwide is a very, very important component of any inclusionary provision. So, um,
Thank you, Kate.
Uh, so I like the idea that it would be townwide, not just commercial and that, um, and that, you know, it just gives the developers more options when they're, when they're trying to figure out, you know, what they're going to do and it gives really the town a little bit more ability to incentivize what everybody, uh, well, not everybody perhaps agrees, but you know, that, that it would be good to have more diversity within the town and this is just another tool in the toolbox. And so apologies, sorry I couldn't get on earlier, but thank you for letting me have my three minutes.
Thank you, Kate. Well, we need to, uh, close the public hearing. Or else, question is, are there any additional, um, members of the public who wish to, uh, talk and, and I, everyone has, uh, had their, uh, chance to talk? I see no other hands, so I need to close the, uh, public hearings or the public, um, meeting. Is there desire to have a break? I'd like to have a break. Uh, it's, uh, nine after nine. Let's come back at, uh, nine fifteen. Is that okay with everybody? Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Marty. It is, uh, nine sixteen PM and we're gonna restart the, uh, town Maraga town council meeting, uh, eight twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. We've now have had the, um, staff report, questions from the town council to staff, public input, and that moves us on to the phase of providing input to staff on what they provided to us tonight. Uh, do you guys, does staff have a particular format that they want to use for, for doing such?
We're happy to put the, uh, last two slides up that marched through the policy decisions and the main items that we need your input on.
Could you, could you show us that? And I'll come to you in a minute, Mike. Okay, so this, these are the slides. So you're, you're proposing that we, we work through these two slides. Fine. Uh, Mike, before I, I come to you, let me preface this or preamble, and that is, uh, I am the one responsible for requesting staff to provide us recommendations. I did that, uh, because what I see are, are an awful lot of, of variables within variables. So the, the permutations are quite large, uh, of what we're playing with here. And, uh, staff needs input from us that they can use to help start to put together an actual, um, uh, ordinance. And, um, a person that I, I, this, I still see this perhaps as a starting point because how all these fit together, I'm not sure that it's yet the, the final fit. And, and I want to compliment, uh, uh, Renata for asking about, well, learning from other cities that have proven experience and, and that's one of the things I really talked to staff about the other day. Uh, I also have, uh, hangups about simplicity and also risks of, of what happens when you have exceptions. I, I'm open to, uh, other ideas from, um, from, uh, town council members as to how to proceed from here. Um, Mike, did you, did you want to, uh, weigh in?
Yeah, first I, I had a, a quick question I wanted to ask staff and then I have a suggestion on process going forward. The quick question for staff is, uh, did you review the staff report with, um, Maraga developers similar to what you did when you did the constraints analysis and you heard from developers, everybody said you have to reduce your parking requirements? Did you have those conversations? Did you get feedback from developers? And is there feedback that you could share with us from those developers?
Yeah, I would say the feedback from developers that we have received over the last year was part of the input that went into this proposal and this report. So we heard from developers that, for example, fifteen and twenty percent might be too high, which is where we ended up on ten percent. Uh, we heard from developers that, uh, you know, requiring low income for sale units would not pencil out. That, that's the kind of feedback, but we heard that earlier in the process. We didn't explicitly take this report and circulate it as an internal draft to developers prior to bringing it to town council. We certainly would intend to work with developers in drafting the ordinance. It's important to get that buy-in.
And, and I'd just like to add that the other thing that we heard loud and clear from developers is that they, they need concessions. So due to just the individual characteristics of particular parcels, there are certain things that they're gonna want concessions on.
Okay, that was good. Mike, can you quickly describe the process you recommend?
Yeah, but the only difference is staff asked us in the staff report to comment on six policy items. This summary sort of condenses the previous staff exhibits because I think they had like one exhibit on each policy item. So I would prefer to go through those and have the conversation. This is a little too summarize summarized for my personal taste.
It's others. Teresa?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you know what? I had that all written out, but I like this this better because to me, this is much simpler and much clearer. So I would go with with what what we're looking at right now.
Renata?
I I agree. And Mr. Mayor, and if if you're responsible for this, I I I appreciate it because I think there's no surprises in here. All of this information was in the staff report. But what this does do is help us focus on focus our feedback in a way that makes this a productive and meaningful conversation. So I I would go with this chart.
Sona?
Same. I actually was hoping that we would start here. Well, we have such good charts comparing to other cities, jurisdictions. All of that has been discussed and weighed in, and now we need to coalesce around these. And so
And and I
coalesce around these, then we can't.
Thank you. And I and I want to emphasize, at least as far as I'm concerned, these are not necessarily the final even for tonight. These these are sort of like their their base case or their the initial discussion. And we can, we can change it and we can ask questions. And I ask that staff be prepared to sort of explain the the whys for for each of these. And so let's not go into this and saying, okay, we're just gonna rubber stamp this. Is that okay? That make sense? Barry, do you want to lead us through it?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So and I, you know,
By the way, I I excuse me for interrupting, but you did such a great job in July leading us through that the red line on the ordinance itself, that that's the best practice.
Thank, thank you. And I I have nothing to redline here, but we will take notes and and listen to your feedback and incorporate it. And you know, there there are two slides here. This one just has the policy issues one and two, and this one has three through seven. So there there are not as many decision points on some of these policy considerations. I would say the first two are really very critical. And the first question is whether the ten percent recommendation is acceptable. And I really think you have to think about the answer to that in the context of the next question, which is that there would be a different income group targeted for the for sale product and the for rent product. And and again, that's the lower end of the ten to fifteen percent that we saw in surveying other communities. You have the option to come back in a few years if you feel like you want to make it higher or lower. But really, ten percent is where we're starting. Did you want me to go any further on that? Or I think that's I'm teeing that up for comment.
I'm happy to go first, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I I my only comment is that when we discussed this the other day, staff said that this is quotes conservative, and after several years, you might revisit it and and adjust it. And so I think that's that's another another piece to this tool. I I'm I'm fine with going further. I guess can I show have a show of thumbs how people feel about the ten percent? Okay. Go forward.
And I should clarify that that if the thumbs up also includes the higher income category for the for sale than the for rent, that's really a matter of economics. Okay. So the the other part of this is whether
Can I, can I add something, Mayor Waliki?
Yes.
Because there's something up on the screen. I don't believe that the recording shows people's thumbs. And I also can't see everybody's thumbs on my bar. I don't know how to change that. So so you might just wanna consider that.
Can we can just say that, Mayor Waliki, because we're not taking a vote, we could just say that, you know, you've confirmed there's a consensus among the council.
Okay. I have con- conduct. Right. So on number one, policy issue number one, I have confirmed consensus among the town council members on percentage required. And now we're working on income group targeted. Is that correct?
I think we're past that.
Yeah, I think that
Past that whole thing.
Part, yeah, part, but the but there is another aspect which I haven't mentioned, and that's the concept of using accessory dwelling units in single family subdivisions with a twenty five percent requirement for ADUs as an option for a developer choosing to or who who was meeting this requirement. And again, those are those are not deed restricted. Those are just market rate ADUs to be used as the homeowner chooses.
Okay, Renata?
And and I I I think I I am in favor of this. To me, this is part of the of providing options that are going to reduce the likelihood that stuff gets pushed out into the outskirts of town. So I I like this. If it's twenty, you know, again, Barry, I don't know what analysis is gonna go into the twenty five percent. Is that the the right number? But conceptually, I think this makes sense because I think it harmonizes the need to actually get stuff built with the need to preserve the character of the community.
Mike?
Yeah, I I have sort of a question. So I I thought this was the breakthrough of the night, and we briefly discussed it on Monday. But if I'm understanding this correctly, new single family homes, you can require developers to do twenty five percent ADUs, which is by size, not deed restricted. It does not trigger a twenty percent density bonus. I think that's all great news if I said that correctly, Barry. I I do question whether twenty five should be twenty percent, but I fully support this concept.
Okay. So I'm seeing shaking of heads. So I seek consensus in policy issue number one of the town council. Let's move on to number two.
Okay, the so there are two parts to this. The first is an exemption for any project with less than five units. So an individual, single family home or any two, three, or four unit development would be exempt from both the fee and any inclusionary requirement. Beyond five units, a project with five to nine units would be paying a fractional fee. The amount of that fee will need to be determined as part of this process. If a project has more than ten units, then it is subject to the requirement to set aside at least ten percent of the units as below market rate. And any fraction above that will be converted into a fee. So that's that is the proposal here.
Comments, Mike?
I have a different opinion. I would follow the Clayton model on exemption. I would say anything less than ten would be exempt. And on fractional units, I would follow Lafayette and Danville. I do not think we should be in the in lieu of fee business. So when we have fractional units, pick your discretion. But if it's point five or more, it rounds to one. If it's point five or less, it rounds to zero. Stay out of fractional fees and hopefully the rounding will break even, in my opinion.
Renata, you I saw your head next.
Um, I, you know, when we first talked about the fees, in lieu of fees, I I was not warm to the idea because I'm not thrilled about having to set up an infrastructure to to support it. But the more I've thought about this, the more I think it's unavoidable. And that and and that it could actually inure to the benefit of the town. I mean, we we are not big enough that fractional fees could, I'm sorry, in lieu of fees would amount to to a hill of beans that would allow us to actually do any building ourselves. And we're not in that business anyway. However, if it is possible to use the fractional, whether it's the in lieu fees or fractional fees, and I think if if we go this way, I like this structure. But if if that money can be used as seed money for Nexus studies, for collaboration with nonprofit groups that are in the business of building below market rate housing or or other giving us the ability to acquire tools and do work that will actually make this housing happen, then I think it is worth collecting some limited number of in lieu fees sort of along the lines that's outlined here.
Other comments? Teresa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I could go either way. Um, I I I don't want staff to have to mess with in lieu fees. And looking at the map that you had on, I think it was slide seven, and thinking about all of these towns, we're closest to to Clayton. And in in so many ways. So I think I think I would go with Mike on this one. I keep it simple.
Sona, do you have a thought on this?
I'm very similar in lines to how the vice mayor articulated her position and rationale, in particular because I like the idea of being able to use it as potential additional ways for nonprofit partnership, something that we might not be able to do, but could do with some of this.
If we go with with ten, does that impact the decision on use of fractional fees?
Uh, not necessarily. I think they're separate issues. I think you can you can go with ten and then eliminate the fractional fractional fee for the five to nine, but retain it for the projects that have more than ten units. If you choose to go that route, that's kind of a middle middle ground.
May I share the reasons for staff's recommendation?
Sure, please do.
Yeah. So in the housing element, there were a number of policies that included things like the fair rental housing program where you hire a consultant to go in and to work with rental housing owners to make sure that they're not discriminating against a certain, you know, race or protected class. And then to have education programs for those landlords. There's also the management of the B M R units that we'll need to do, and we might do it in house or we might hire a consultant to do that. So having a little bit of of money for these programs could help the town in managing our responsibilities related to to these units. And so that's the reason for the recommendation. Again, not thinking that it's gonna be a huge sum of money, but enough money to potentially help us with some of the costs.
Teresa, can you live with that?
Yes, I can. It's fine.
Mike, can you live with that?
I have a different opinion.
I'm sorry?
I have a different opinion. It's fine.
Let's go with the, it looks like we're gonna go with the recommendation. So I see a consensus of a majority of town council members with policy issue number two as proposed or as as presented, excuse me. Should we move on to number three?
Okay, so three, we are required by state law to provide at least one alternate means of compliance to building the units on site. And the idea here is that there are a number of alternatives that we would make available. But we would structure them to be less attractive than putting the unit, including the unit in the project itself. And so the options, these are not actually options. This is a menu of choices that would be made available to a developer who who could not provide the units on site. And that would be to provide them offsite at one and a half times the number or to acquire an existing building and rehabilitate it with twice the number of units that would be otherwise required on site or to allow land donation to a nonprofit affordable housing developer. And there would be a calculation made for what type of donation was equivalent to the number of units that were not going to be provided in terms of the value.
I take it in each of these cases, there's gonna have to be some additional meat put to what this really means in terms of very low versus low versus moderate and and how the units are handled. Is that correct?
Uh, there's some detail in the ordinance. I think the key here is that in the units, we want the units to be provided on site, and it's really only in exceptional circumstances that there that someone is choosing one of these options instead of doing that. I mean, I think that may be a question for the council to consider as well. But how how keen are you about options to building the units on site? And then there's not a lot of detail in most of these ordinances about what each of these things entails. There's more detail, obviously, than what you see on the screen here. But there there's not a tremendous, you know, there's not a lot of calculations and things like that that go into the ordinance.
Renata?
Yeah, I I think I like providing alternate means of compliance and and in my view is the more the merrier.
Yes.
I have two, I have two thoughts on on what is in front of us. One is, isn't it possible that there are circumstances, for example, my, you know, development on the outskirts of on the periphery of the town scenario, where you actually don't want the units on site? Um, and so I, so this presumption that it's always better to have them on site, I I wanna I wanna be convinced that that's that that is correct and as as a matter of consistent application. Or should there be exceptions to that in in circumstances where we actually do want the units to go somewhere else? And then the second thing is, you know, this this these multipliers, the one point five and the two times units. Again, I I haven't a clue where that falls on the, you know, the sort of the harmonizing, making this attractive to developers versus making sure, making sure that and and making sure that these are built and protecting the character of of the of the feel of of the community. So I would would like those to be a finer point to be put on and maybe some 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 rationale. I mean, why isn't it, why don't we just say fifteen percent or twenty percent of the overall project size? So.
Um, may I add something here?
Sure. Yes, please.
I know that, I think it was Pleasant Hill, one of the other cities did the allow acquisition rehab at four times the units. So if you guys give us the direction that this is what you want to go in, again, this is general policy directors. As we get into the weeds and start looking at some of the other things and kind of comparing them and making sure that it's fair and equitable and have a better understanding of the numbers, we might come back and we might say, you know what, we, I know we talked about two, but we have more information now. This is what we're recommending. And you'll be able to discuss all that when we're talking about the actual ordinance language.
That's a, that's a, I can recognize myself. That's a good point, and I was sort of heading towards that. But I'd like to almost take it one step further. And I'd like to know, well, for example, Pleasant Hill is using a certain number multiplier. Has it been applied? Has it and hasn't been applied successfully? You know, so sort of again, learning from others is is we we need to leverage ourselves through through the actual experiences of others because we don't have the population of of housing units to truly have our own population. Have our own database. Teresa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I liked what Lafayette had. It said city council must find that onsite production It said, "City Council must find that onsite production of such units is infeasible, or that greater public benefit will result from the units being offsite." "Council may require that offsite units be provided at a greater ratio, up to two to one relative to onsite requirements." I think that, that does what Renata was talking about, was it makes the council decide what is, how is this going to work for that particular project? Because the way it is, the way we have it written here, it makes me very uncomfortable.
Mike, how do you feel?
Yeah, I would tend to, what was just read from Lafayette, it allows discretion of the council, and I agree with that approach. Combining that with this policy without focusing on the numbers, I would mix those together.
Sona?
I think though, I think though we've heard, like, looking, looking at the feedback from developers that we shouldn't be looking at adding more discretionary options or processes, I think what Renata's point was that we should just question the premise of it being that onsite is better to begin with, which makes sense, and would like to get more rationale. And then, my only question that I didn't see here, but is it implied that we're saying that these need to all, anything offsite needs to go online at the same time? Is that part of this recommendation that we're, you guys are putting forth?
Yes, so that is required, that the, any offsite units go online at the same time.
And that they're in the town of Moraga.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Sona, could you, could you live with the Lafayette proposal as verbalized? We're not shaking our head, no.
And, and I was not at all endorsing that. I actually think it's a bad idea. So I disagree. I think introducing another complicated subjective step in the process is counterproductive and will deter and not encourage development.
That's how I feel.
I kind of like Lafayette.
I can kind of add that as staff, it's pretty difficult for us with changing planning commissions and councils and the, just the nature of how long projects take. Maybe that will be shortened. But to not know where the council's gonna stand, so predictability and objective standards are important and will help staff greatly. So I'll just share that.
Yeah, I agree. The, what we've heard from developers is they like certainty of review.
Right. I hear you. So are we sort of narrowing down to what it, what it's drafted, but these numbers need to be truth-tested?
Couldn't we also, what I was trying to say is, mix the discretion mentioned in Lafayette with the clarity of what's in front of us?
How would we do that?
I think those are mutually exclusive.
Well, I, I, I would, we've got really good staff. I would just ask staff if that's plausible. That's what, I want, I want-
You are so directed.
I want some subjectivity, but I agree, we wanna make this clear, so I want some objectivity. So I'd say, well, turn it over to staff. That would just be my two cents. And if staff says that's unreasonable, then fine.
I do think there's a way, there, I mean, I'm thinking of a concept that, I, I think we can take the feedback you've given us on this and come up with something that responds to both of the issues that have been raised.
You know what, you could add one more option, and that option is, take it to the town council, and maybe the town council then decides it can be a one-to-one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it sounds like Barry has a way of threading the needle, and so let's... But I think we have consensus that we want options, that we want alternatives.
Yes. Yes, that's, I agree. I wasn't trying to say that was the, that was the final answer.
It buried the needle in the thread.
So it's, I, I, I think I'm hearing consensus that we're gonna stick with number three with some, it's requested ground truthing on the numbers, and also try to provide some, in some way, shape, or form, some subjectivity as an option. Does that, does that make it? Are we ready for number four?
Yes.
Design.
Great. I'll walk through this quickly. So design question really is, do the below-market rate units need to look the same as the market rate units? We're recommending that they should look, the exterior should be the same, that reduced unit size up to a point should be allowed, but with the same number of bedrooms. We are saying that in cases where a single-family developer is using ADUs to meet the requirement, that obviously those are not going to be the same size as the market rate units. They're ADUs by definition, they're gonna be smaller, but they should blend in.
Mike? Yeah, there's some items that-
And was another, another element? There was another element to this, which was that the internal finishes could be slightly lesser quality.
Right.
And also that they be afforded all the same amenities as the market rate units.
Access to community facilities, right?
Correct. Okay, Mike, you started to-
Yeah, I was, I was just starting to- Yeah, this is an example where the, the design slide had much more, there was a, there was a reference, I believe, that the BMR units would be throughout the development, not just in a certain area. I support that. Number of bedrooms is mentioned. I heard it verbalized, it wasn't here, so number of bedrooms, I agree. And then there was another verbal access to the same amenities. So if those are implied in this, then I can support this.
Renata?
I agree with Mike, that that needs to be put in, those, those, those missing elements. I also would encourage that reduced unit size be defined.
Yes.
Be a number. Up to X percent, because, you know, otherwise you're in the land of subjectivity and unpredictability, which I don't think is appropriate here.
Yeah, and if I may jump in, we did put fifteen percent in, in the earlier slide, which was our attempt to establish what that number should be. But the point is well-taken, that that should be ground-truthed, and we should make sure that that's the number that is the right number.
Sona, Teresa, you guys okay?
Been resolved with the victory. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we've got consensus. I agree that number four is proposed with the additional clarifications with regard to interior finish, access to the amenities, putting a number to the reduced size as is described.
And, you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that they're dispersed?
And dispersion.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that moves us on to number five, length of affordability.
Yeah, I think this is a straightforward one, which is that we are recommending fifty-five-year term of affordability for the rental units and forty-five for the for-sale units, primarily because that is what the density bonus law requires for the units that are using those benefits. That also, this also seems to be the standard that is used in a number of federal and state housing programs, and is by far the most common term of affordability that we saw in the other communities.
I'm seeing thumbs, Mike, or how do you, you got, I'm seeing thumbs up, Sona? We have consensus on number five, length of affordability as proposed. Number six, townwide versus commercial areas only. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, just a question. This is real important to confirm. So we are not allowing deed-restricted ADUs, which could trigger twenty percent density of bonus. Correct, in single-family areas? Is that correct, Barry?
Yeah, that, the proposal would be that the, any ADU be non-deed-restricted. So that is correct. There is a question about whether the developer could choose to do some product in a single-family neighborhood that would be deed-restricted, that could trigger the density bonus. We're giving them the option of not doing that, but we haven't said that that's the only option. So-
My opinion is, I, I, I don't think we should be involved as a town with deed-restricted, because we have the back and forth, show me your paperwork. I don't get that. I think the ADU by size, like Danville, that makes all the sense in the world. And by the way, as you pointed out, Barry, that might help our traffic. They use an ADU for a tool shed, or a guest that comes three times a year. So I really like the Danville model. So I, I would not be in favor of an option for deed-restricted that triggers the density bonus. An example is our very high fire hazard area, Indian Valley.
Others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Teresa?
Thank you. I would say ADUs by design, and not deed-restricted. And my understanding is, because of the zoning that we have, you know, what I've been hearing is, because of the zoning, there will not be, you know, the apartment buildings in, in the, outside of the- Yeah, in Indian Valley, or outside of the two shopping centers.
Sure. Renata, I saw you sort of shaking your head.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy.
Sona?
Yes, townwide.
So, I'm seeing consensus on townwide ADUs not, not deed-in, not deed-restricted.
Yes.
So that takes us to incentives. Number seven?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify on the number six. The proposal, as it was originally made, was to give the developer the option of meeting an inclusionary requirement by doing ADUs, but they would also have the option of meeting the requirement by building units onsite in a way that could trigger the density bonus. But what I'm hearing is, is that's not, that's not desired. So we will need to do a little more work on that one.
That's a sensitive.
Right, because the, the state density bonus, they might be able to do deed-restricted low-income units and have them apply. I don't know, we'll have to look into that, right?
Yeah.
We don't know.
If, if, if you have to, if you are recommending going down that path, then I think the request would be to bring it back to the town council before finalizing anything, because it's, it's a, it appears to be, what I'm seeing is, it's, it's a, it is a sensitive issue.
But they would be able to elect to do it regardless of what our inclusionary zoning policy was?
That's true.
Just to be clear, they could avail themselves of the state density bonus law, regardless of the inclusionary housing ordinance, whatever the town drafts, so just to be clear.
We have, we have no control over that.
That's right. There's, there's two separate paths here. They could do the state density bonus. If they do that, it would have to be deed-restricted. What we're saying is, if it's inclusionary, and they wanna meet our inclusionary zoning, that it not be deed-restricted.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And since-
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, that, is, with that clarification, is everyone okay?
I think so.
Depends.
It'll come back to us, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, definitely come back to this council and-
We're gonna get another-
Another whack at it.
You, you have at least two opportunities to make changes.
Right. Seven incentives.
Yeah, so the last item was the recommendation that we rely on the state density bonus provisions for incentives. And I believe there was some conversation when we had the Q and A earlier about possibly developing or some measurable local concessions, so we could have a better sense of what those were, rather than just saying we're gonna rely on the state density bonus, if I understood that correctly.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Since that was my point? Yeah, I mean, Barry, my question is, does it behoove us in terms of local control and predictability and clarity and desirability of working in Moraga to provide some incentives locally, so that, you know, we, we, we're sort of, you know, in, in charge of what they are, as opposed to relying on the state density bonus. Now, I understand the countervailing argument, which is that the state density bonus is what it is, and if it's triggered, we have to live with it. And, and if that pot is so sweet that there's nothing, that doing something locally is pointless, then I understand that. But I would just appreciate that being considered.
Yeah, I think we can, we'll take that to heart. I have not seen any of the other ordinances specify numeric incentives, such as, you know, you get a twenty percent reduction in your setback, or you get eight feet of additional height, or whatever those numbers are. But we, we are going to look into whether or not we can do something like that, so that there's more predictability.
No, this is just me, so if the other council members think this is, you know, crazy, I, I'm fine. I'll, I'll relent.
I, I, I'm all, all in favor of continuing. Like I said, I've said this several times now, we're, I don't think we're at the final point yet. So I'm all in favor of considering alternatives. Sona?
Yeah, that, that makes sense, but so in terms of relying on state density bonus as this recommendation is stated, this may be a rudimentary question, but what, what gets stated in the ordinance then? If there's not any local specific, then you just reference the-
Yes, and the way the, I mean, we looked at seven ordinances for seven nearby cities, and they all basically say that the community shall make available incentives such as, and then it's just a list of development standards that might be relaxed in order to make a project work. And there are things like setbacks, and height limits, and parking requirements, and so on. But there, there are no numbers attached to any of those things. It's all discretionary.
Got it. Okay.
Teresa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Barry, I would love to see that kind of side-by-side. And I think, I think it might be actually, seeing that side-by-side, it might be too prescriptive, because I'm sure it depends on the location. You know, one size is not gonna fit all in this situation. So, but it would still be good to see kind of what you're talking about. You know, what, what does the state density say, and what would be akin to Moraga? So, that would be nice.
Sounds to me, what I'm hearing is, yet to be finalized, work yet to be done to, to consider alternatives. Are we okay with that? But at the moment, we, this is what we have. Okay? Mike, you okay with that?
Work in progress.
Work in progress. I, I have one last overall question with regard to this, and that is, Cynthia, is, is this, at what point will this be ready? And is the intent to invite the developers to review it with staff and get their feedback? Try to get their buy-in?
So it's, as the PowerPoint initially shared, it's scheduled to go to the planning commission in November, and then come to the council. The first reading, the special meeting on November sixteenth that you should have on your calendar, and then come to the final on December fourteenth for this council. And we are talking about having some, a roundtable or a stakeholder meeting. So we will vet that with them. I think that we have- I think that, um, we have heard a lot from them and they have provided, um, great insights and, uh, real information about feasibility that will take into consideration.
So what I'm, what I'm focused on is having that round, you know, making sure we have that round table because, you know, this forum is not a very good forum to, to take, um, detailed, in-depth, um, comprehensive, uh, feedback from the input from.
Well, there's a lot of stakeholders.
There's a lot of stakeholders and so, you know, staff has concerns about, you know, having a forum just for developers because what about, you know, uh, all the, uh, the superintendent, we've got the YMB group. We have a lot of people who are, you know, pro development and asking for affordable housing. So we're really trying to balance the input of everybody, but the, the important thing from the developers is to, you know, work with them. Some of them have projects that have actually done some initial designs and so we know what, what those, um, the, the concessions that they, they might need be, that they might need are, and so we can work so that it doesn't, uh, stop development.
Right, and to respect, uh, in my, in my history, uh, if I were due a stakeholder analysis, I, I'd bring one, uh, particular developer to be highly influential and highly negative, and thus they warranting a lot of attention. And there may be others too.
Yeah.
The developers are, are gonna have a high influence in, so anyways, Mike?
Yeah, just quickly, I, I agree with Cynthia. There's a lot of stakeholders, but at the end of the day, um, you know, I, I continue to read staff reports and say, we need to ensure this happens. We don't, we talked about that, so we zone, we do tools and developers develop, um, they're a key piece of this. So us and the developers in a round table, I think is an outstanding idea, even if they disagree with eighty percent.
And, and we're not gonna be able to please everybody.
Right, but I, I, but actually I've heard this before. I've heard two of the council members say they want to meet with the developers. Staff doesn't believe that having developers sit at a table to talk with the council is necessarily appropriate. You can talk to them one-on-one. We talk to them all the time along with other groups. So I would like to get an idea from the council. Do you really want us to get the, all the developers together so you guys can, you know, go through all the details with them? Or do you want more of a round table with different people talking about the complexities and their interests related to affordable housing?
Renata?
You guys are getting a ton of input from a lot of sources, through whatever means you typically use. Barry, you have, you know, you, you're sitting one-on-one with developers, you're sitting one-on-one with housing advocates. I mean, I, I don't think that having a round table is gonna be at all productive. And, uh, because I think that information can be better obtained through the, whatever, uh, means you're doing it now. I mean, it's not like we're not getting it. We're getting it and getting it in spades. And so I, I think that by having it in the format of a public meeting with the entire council is gonna impose all kinds of restrictions on the discussion that is gonna make it stilted and not as productive. And then it does beg the question, well, wait a minute, if we're meeting with the developers, shouldn't we be meeting with open space groups? If we're meeting with open space groups, shouldn't we be meeting with nonprofit housing advocates? So I, I, I am, you know, I would continue to get the developer input that you guys are getting, uh, because I do not think there's a shortage or dearth of it at all.
I recognize myself and, and communicate that, um, I, I've, I, tonight I was surprised, and I don't like to be surprised with the feedback. And, and, and some of the feedback, it's in this format, in, in this manner, cramming it into three minutes is not a, is something that I can, I can do anything with. I do not necessarily have to meet with anybody, but I do need to know really the meat, the substance, what, what that input is, what that feedback is for these stakeholders. And, and then again, Renata, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, do a stakeholder analysis and, and rate the stakeholders and, and look at which ones can really impact success. And, and, and where they stand in each of these areas, i- i- it'll tell you where you have to focus. You, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I do not want to be in these future meetings in November or December and have, uh, stakeholders coming in and, and screaming at us for three minutes and then telling them, okay, you've had your, your time. That is not success.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, that's not, that's not the only, that's not the only way that, that they're providing input. That's just three minutes in a public meeting. There's a lot of conversation going on and input being provided that is outside the confines of our meeting.
In, in representing the, the citizens of the town, I, I need something more comprehensive than what I heard tonight. However it happens. Um, are we ready to move on? Uh, I'm sorry, Teresa, yes, thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Like you, and, and when I say you, I mean everyone here, um, I have called developers here in town to talk to them about their feelings. I've talked to residents, I've talked to open space people, I've talked to business people, and I feel that that is my job. I don't think we need a round table when I know these people's phone numbers and I call them. So, um, you know, I, I don't see the need for the round table, but I think it's a good idea. I just don't see the need.
I guess we've, uh, provided input to, uh, the, uh.
They haven't heard from Sona yet.
Sona?
Thank you. Yeah, and, and the thing with the round table that is just challenging is that this, this is, that's a snapshot. This has been a long-term planning initiative and through every stage, we've been taking notes, hearing what comes to us through the public comment, hearing what comes to us through the balancing act tool, through the survey, through interviews and conversations with Saint Mary's, through conversations with residents. It's not a snapshot, it's a longitudinal, like, progression as we've made decisions. And as we've heard different inputs, I've referenced parking today that came from historical meetings that I've re-watched and that have been helpful contexts at this point in time. So for me, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it would give me any extra edge more than it would create actually restrictions in how we actually converse and talk.
We're, we're not taking, um, uh, input, and the staff's gotta take input from us and, and turn it into ordinance. So we're, we're putting pen to paper. Mike, then this is gonna be the final, then we.
Yeah, Barry, yeah, I was just gonna try and close out, so, you know, Renata and Cynthia, I, I hear your voices and I agree with you. A lot of work has been done to engage multiple stakeholders, including developers. And by the way, I thought you did a great job on the constraints. Because I went and I talked to developers and I heard exactly what you heard. So that was a really good thing, and you could say, Mike, you could have saved your time, and we would have been fine. The only area I think I've been agreeing to disagree, I'd like to take one more step. Because there's very good information and engagement that staff is doing with developers and it's in the staff report, but as a council member on something this important, I feel need to have a conversation, you know, beyond the staff report, beyond the three minutes. And maybe a forum is in the right way, so I mean, you know, I, I'm glad to do what I did before, is I'll start calling people up. You wanna have a cup of coffee and let's chat, and I'll listen. That's okay, um, you know, but I, I just, for me, I just need just one more step, and maybe it's one step too much, but that's just me.
Okay, and we beat this one to death? I hope so. Um, shall we move on to, uh, ten, ten B, which is, uh, League of California Cities Voting Delegates?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
But before, before we, um, m- move on to that, can, can we all just take an opportunity to thank the public for, for their input? To, and to thank our incredible team for the work they did. Um, you, you made this discussion possible.
Yeah, I think both staff, staff, this is, this was so dense and deep, I was amazed. I thought it was gonna be a nice little meeting, but it was deep and I, you know, spent Monday, and you guys did great. And, and I'm really pleased, to me, there was a breakthrough on the, on the Danville ADU. So it's really good. In public, thank you for taking your time. And pretty interesting, what we hear, pretty strong support for inclusionary housing throughout the town. And if we get rid of that density bonus, I think we can live with it. So I thank you, Renata, for bringing that up. Few more thank yous in there for everybody.
Thank you. Are we released to, uh, move on to, uh, ten B? Okay.
Okay.
B.
Would you like?
So this is, uh.
Or you got it?
Provide direction to, provide direction to voting delegate and alternate regarding amendment to Cal City's bylaws at the League of California Cities Annual Meeting in Long Beach, California, September ninth, which the, the entire conference is the seventh day, the ninth, um, for the purpose of voting. Did everyone have a chance to, uh, look at this and does staff have anything that they want to present on this?
I don't really have anything to present. This is a, you know, this is a bylaw amendment to, um, some of their structure, so it's not really a policy.
Would anyone like to de, would anyone like to debate this?
Nope, Mr. Mayor, I, after you take public comment, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I, I just have one question. Are, are, is somebody flying down to Long Beach to vote on this?
Steve is.
Did, I'm, I'm, and, and I'm sorry to throw a stone here, but do we really need to send somebody to fly down on a bylaw change?
I mean, it's a conference.
Well, it, it is the league's conference, so it'd be more than just voting on the.
Well, but there's usually, there's a couple items that are of some substance and the networking that goes with it. I look at this and I just wonder about the substance and, um, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to, um, the mayor.
Well, that's, that's, I, I'd love to see, I see, uh, uh, show of hands by town council members, you know, do we need representation at this particular conference? It's, it's pretty, it's pretty marginal. It's, I absolutely agree, and, and personally, I have no desire to get into a steel tube again to throw myself through the air to, to get down there.
What happens if we don't go?
Absolutely nothing.
Teresa wants to go.
No, well, actually, I was gonna say, um, I've been there and I went to, you know, tons of different meetings about all kinds of things, and it was valuable. It really was, and I got to stay on the Queen Mary, and it was awesome. It made it all worthwhile. So I, I suggest, if you do go, have Marty make reservations ASAP. I had such a nice room and Tom Butt, if you know him, he had a crummy room. So have Marty make reservations as fast.
They, they were already made, the, uh, uh, plane reservations are already made. It's, it's a done, yeah, yeah, that part of it is done. It's not on the Queen Mary. And by the way, a few months ago, there was serious concern that the Queen Mary was gonna capsize, so things have changed on the Queen Mary. Renata?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just watching you in operation at, at, you know, the dinners we've been to together, I mean, you, you really do make good use of the time to learn from other jurisdictions, meet other people. So I think all in all, it probably is worth it. It's not about the vote, it's about the connectivity and the the information you can get from, from your colleagues.
Right, so, uh, unless there's, uh, objections, otherwise I'm gonna open this, uh, open the meeting for public comment. We have one hand up, Kendall Langen. Kendall, would, if you'd like to comment on this particular item, uh, we would welcome that, uh, three minutes, please.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm just, I'm kind of at a loss. I think that there are things that have been discussed tonight that you guys made decisions on that haven't fully been disclosed to the public. And I don't, I'm just uncomfortable with the process of the council members tonight in the process of legislation and.
Kendall, Kendall, we, we may need to, let's take that offline and, and, uh, by, actually by, by law, we can't have that discussion here tonight as a town council. We're restricted by the Brown Act to only discuss what's, what the item is that we're discussing. So, um, I, you know, I, I welcome the opportunity, I'll, I'll, I was happy to meet with you, I'll, I'll make contact, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, if we, can we confirm that Mr. Langen doesn't have any comments about the item that's at hand, which is the, the league conferences, um, about the vote that's before the, uh, members of the league to amend the bylaws?
Kendall, do you have any, uh, comments on, on that, uh, going down to the conference? League of California Cities and voting on changes to the by, uh, bylaws as, as proposed?
Well, no, I have no problem with that. What I was actually getting to, that I'm, I'm uncomfortable with where we're heading, but thank you very.
I understand. Yeah, well, let me, I'll, I'll, uh, meet with you offline.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, well, Renata, you offered to make a, uh, motion?
Oh, I, I move to, um, direct, uh, our voting delegate to vote in favor of the proposed bylaw changes at the upcoming Cal Cities Conference.
Second.
Is there a second? Um, Mike, for second and a, roll call vote, Sona?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Renata?
Yes.
The mayor says no. Yes.
You'll have fun. You'll have fun. You'll love it.
Okay, uh, that takes us on to, uh, communications. And, uh, we have one communication.
What, what order, Mr. Mayor?
Not quite, not quite, timeout. Y- yes.
I, I believe we skipped over number twelve.
That's, that's where I'm going.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, we, we actually skipped over number eleven too. There's, there's no discussion items. Request for future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Not tonight. So let's move on to, uh, uh, number thirteen communications. And this was a, uh, letter of support to, uh, the bill SB eight-eight-four expedited underground program. And this came up, uh, late last week while I was in Tahoe, and, uh, I approved it representing the town council on the town, and since that was remote, they used my electronic signature and it shows. I guess, as summary, um, so everyone is aware, um, this, this actually requires PGNE to underground a much larger, by a factor of like, I think a hundred, uh, in terms of length of, uh, electric wiring, high, high voltage wiring below ground for, uh, fire, uh, reduction or fire protection. And, uh, it's, it's something that, uh, actually PGNE was lobbying in favor of because, um, I think my interpretation is that they can recover costs associated with that. Um, Cynthia, do you have more information on that than that?
I forget the numbers, I'm sorry. It was like, right now they have to do a hun-
Like a hundred miles?
And this is like ten thousand miles? I mean, it's ridiculous, so, um, but it's, uh, you know, given that Maraga is part of it, is a higher, very high fire severity zone, we wrote this letter and, and it specifically doesn't insinuate that the mayor signed it on behalf of the town council or representing the town council. So, you know, we, we were, we were careful in that, so.
So I hope, uh, we don't need a motion on this or this is just for information, right?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me, so are they planning to, to underground some of our, our things and where?
Yeah, so we've spoke to them and, um, they, we are not on, on, in their plans. I mean, they did, didn't they do Saint Mary's Road? Cause they did a mile.
They did.
Which, you know.
Couple summers ago.
Offline, I'll tell you how I feel. Offline, I'll tell you how I feel about how effective that mile was in protecting public safety, since everyone else was there.
My answer is that this, this may actually apply to the high tension lines. Not, not the ones down, like Saint Mary's Road, these are the, you know, like the Paradise Fire was started by uh, a failed tower, actually, a component on one of the high tension, high voltage towers, uh, that dropped the line to the ground. Uh, and, and I think that's what they're, they're, they're undergrounding, which to me is pretty daunting, but anyway.
Actually, I saw a fire from that same thing, in, in, on Bear Creek. That same exact thing that happened.
Right. Mike?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good letter. The only question I have is, uh, should we share our opinion with State Senator Steve Glazer and Rebecca Power? A letter to them, which would have to be a separate agenda item.
I think it's after the fact at this point, isn't it?
Yeah, it was due, it was due, the deadline was last week, and we.
Oh, that's why we, that's why we rushed it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, one more thing.
Else on this?
Yeah, will we get a copy of that letter, or did we have a copy? I didn't see one.
In your packet. Oh, I didn't see it. Okay, thank you, I'll be looking for it.
M- Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, because there was such a, a robust discussion on this item, I would suggest we take public comment.
Thank you. I open the meeting for public comment. Is there any public comment from attendees? I see none. I'm gonna close the meeting, bring it back to the town council, Mike?
Um, I have a suggestion for the mayor for adjournment.
Yes.
You would like, I would like to suggest we adjourn the meeting in honor of Brenda Brandt and her service tomorrow.
Can I, can I add to that?
If you're the mayor.
That is a, that's a great one to adjourn to. I'd like to, to adjourn it also. Mark, it's a terrible anniversary. It's six months that the Ukrainians have been suffering invasion. And six months ago, they were, you know, had a pretty normal life like the rest of us. And uh, this, this is just unbelievable. So, how do we do that? That's, I've, I've stated my statement, and that's, that's a adjourn in honor of Brenda Brandt, Brianna Brandt. Young, Brianna Brandt, young. Councilmember Smocker.
Oh, I second that, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, it's late.
Yeah.
Sona, go.
Yeah, she did.
We already have a motion in the second on the floor, so.
We need to say yes, Teresa.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Councilmember McCord?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ursas.
Yes.
Mayor Wallaki, yes. Meeting's adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.